Okay, I'll call the committee meeting to order. Mr. Shelton, if you could give us a highlight with respect to the addendum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And members of council and staff and the public that's in attendance. We did have an addendum item circulated on Thursday. So, item 1A relates to the MetroLink's PowerPoint presentation. Item 9, there's a correction on page 36. These are the BIA minutes of August 18, 2015, which should include Member Olga Pava, who is present at the meeting. Item 13A is a deputation by Mr. Blomstein, and it relates to the motion dealing with the insurance program for underground piping. Item 15, it's a PowerPoint presentation by the Director of Financial Services, re the 2016 preliminary draft budget. Item 16 is the joint report 2015-55, re the 2016 preliminary draft operating capital and utility budgets. Item 17, we have the Central York Fire Services Joint Council Committee minutes of October 13, 2015. And item 18, item 3 of the Central York Fire Services minutes regarding the reserve fund report and Schedule D reference, been distributed electronically and hard copies are also available from staff. Item 19 is joint report 2015-19, re lobbyist registry for the Northern Six Waste Contract. And item 20 is a deputation request by Mr. Blomstein, re item 16, the operating budget item. We also typically circulate the closed session agenda on Thursday as well, so there is one closed session item. And I understand, Mr. Mayor, there may be a request from council to, or a member of council, to put item 4 in the closed session in terms of discussion on negotiations. And are there any questions as to why these items are before you in the form of an addendum? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we do have the addendum, agenda before us. I will need a motion to add the addendum items, and also I note that with respect to the closed session, I will need a two-thirds majority of council to add discussions regarding item number 4 to the closed session. So, can I have a motion then, please, to add the addendum items, including a request for closed session discussion relative to item number 4? Councilor Bezance, Regional Counselor, all those in favor. If I need to do a count, hold your hands up for the two-thirds. Okay, thank you. First item then is a presentation from Leslie Wu. Leslie is with the -- sorry. Counselor Sponga, yes, before we start?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to make an announcement at this point, rather than under declarations and announcements. Unfortunately, I have a course that I'm supposed to be attending this week out of town, and for my own professional life, and it's very important I do so. I'm missing classes today, but it's a point of, a very important point, the MetroLink's presentation for Ward 5. And so, I decided to miss my classes, but unfortunately, I have to leave right after your presentation, Mr. Wu, so that I can make, I can be out of town in time for my classes tomorrow. So, I have a number of questions, but, so, my apologies to members of council and the residents, but I'll have to leave right after that presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Wu?
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity. And Counselor Sponga, we're happy to respond if you sent, if someone would send us the questions after we're done.
Okay, and we provide for 10 minutes.
Yeah. So, I'm going to provide you a bit of an RER, a bit of overview of the GO Regional Express Rail, what's involved in terms of infrastructure over the coming years, and then allow some time for you for questions and answers. So, first of all, some of this may be familiar to some of you. We've made a similar presentation to York Region Council a couple of months ago, but I hope this time to focus for the Town of Newmarket on specific to your area. So, folks understand what the GO Regional Express Rail is. It's, in a nutshell, much more GO service and expanded. We are expanding the length and the amount of rail service. We are currently have 63 stations throughout the region. We provide primarily peak period service in the morning and in the evening, with the exception, in June 2013, we added two-way service on the, every 30 minutes on the Lake Shore Line. And we have connections with over 17 local transit agencies, keeping in mind, we do have trains and buses to places like Niagara, Kitchener, Peterborough, and so forth. And our on-time performance is stellar. It's generally, year-over-year, has been over 90%. And GO, as some of you know, has been in existence for over 48 years. GO Regional Express Rail is a major step change for the type of mobility that we're going to see across this region. We are introducing trains up to every 15 minutes, service in both directions, more service throughout the day, and of course, with the introduction of electric trains, we have the ability to move faster. This is not a new concept. Large cities around the world, over 50, employ this type of system, whether it's Paris, the RAR there, the Overground in London, or the North-North-South Wales Translink in Sydney. All of them have similar components, which includes, as I mentioned, the electric, good connections with local transit, and running on surface rail lines. Newmarket sits on one of our seven corridors, the Berry Corridor, and what we are proposing, and what will be introduced over the next nine to 10 years, is a massive change in the amount of service. So, every day, weekdays, 30-minute service in both directions, all through the day, all the way up to Allendale Waterfront, and every 15 minutes from Union to Aurora, in both directions. On mid-days, evenings, and weekends, we will be moving towards all-day service, bidirectional every 60 minutes, so every hour, and every 15 minutes to Aurora. What this means, for those of you who may or may not, if you travel GO, currently, we run 12 trains a day, five in the morning going into the downtown, and seven in the evening returning out towards, along the Berry Corridor. So, for the number of trains that, in the weekday, that means we're moving, we're increasing by about 15%, going from 12 to 32, and going from 0 to 29 on the evenings and weekends. In terms of travel time, there is a 7- to 10-minute time savings, depending on the equipment, and we're now working through our whole fleet transition and composition. Getting to this level of service requires a significant amount of infrastructure investment. We are, throughout the system, adding a total of 150 kilometers of new dedicated GO tracks, new electric trains, and in order to electrify, what that means is we'll be introducing and having to build what we refer to as the overhead catenary that will power the trains. Some of our bridges and tunnels in the system will have to be widened, or raised, or roads lowered, in order to facilitate the more frequent speed of the, of the system, depending on the location. And of course, all our existing stations, as well as looking at the possibility of some new stations, will need to be modified to accommodate the level of service that we're moving towards. Currently, we are working on a number of environmental assessments. They've already begun, some were well underway, as we had already been preparing for two-way all-day service. We are adding a second track from Lansdowne Avenue in Toronto, all the way up through to the Allendale Waterfront GO station in Berry. We are beginning to identify potential locations for passing tracks just north of Aurora, and we are reviewing the space needs for a possible third track up to the East Gwillingbury GO station. Another future layover facility for up to eight trains will have to be accommodated in the Town of Bradford West Gwillingbury. And upgrades at existing GO stations, I mentioned already, will be needed, will need to be made in order to accommodate the additional track. We are also upgrading existing structures, and we are reviewing existing rail crossings and potential grade separations. Currently, we have over 170 public road and, road rail at-grade crossings. Ideally, the preference is to eliminate as many at-grade crossings as possible, in order to make the system more efficient. We are evaluating all the crossings at this time to make recommendations for potential grade separation locations, and working with the Region of York and other area municipalities to coordinate planned public works improvements with any road or rail, bridge works that need to get done. And that will further inform the program and the phasing of the program. We are currently also looking at the opportunities for new stations. Historically, GO has added new stations on an incremental basis. We have the opportunity now, because we are expanding the system on a system-wide, all seven corridors, we are taking a comprehensive business case analysis to determine where there are opportunities and locations that we could take advantage of new stations. There are a lot of considerations around new stations. Obviously, the more stations you add, the slower the trip becomes, if you're, if you're not careful. We want to make sure that the advantages of electrification that asks, that enable us to have quicker trips, we don't offset it by adding too many new stations. That would actually not really serve the purpose. And new stations, it's not only the location, but it's also the issue of the volumes, because what causes the time of the station is the dwell time, the amount of time it takes for the train to stop, offload, and reload, and that's important. So, we're currently at stage three of that new station analysis. I presented to the board in September, a shortlist of 50 sites that we're going to examine, and I will be, we will be going out to, in fact, we were with, some of your staff met last month in late September, I think, and we will be back again in further deeper discussion this month with municipal officials. From that, we will then move to the public in early, in the new year, prior moving to a shortlist, where we'll do more detailed business cases, and then I will be making recommendations to the board in spring 2016. This consultation will be extensive. We also have a lot of other consultation being planned. There's something like 30 meetings being held across the community right now, both looking, because this is simultaneous with our review of the regional transportation plan. We have established corridor committees. There is a Berry Corridor Committee, which includes representatives, elected officials, and in fact, the first round was held earlier this year, and we're about to go into our second round. Correspondents should have come to this council, to the clerical, to the mayor, inviting representation at the upcoming Berry Corridor meeting. In fact, there's the, the information is right there on this slide. It is November 5. Well, it happened, sorry. Station access, just point out a few things about this. As we increase the amount of service at the, coming at the GO stations, what will become critically important is the ability for folks to get to the GO station, and what we refer to as the first and last mile. And we will be looking to integrate, improve local transit, so we've been working very closely with the folks at York Region, as well trying to understand how we could better integrate walking, cycling, car sharing, carpooling into the GO stations, to give folks as many options as possible to take advantage of the service improvements. Whether it is better and improved kiss-and-ride facilities, in Milton, we are experimenting and piloting a dynamic shuttle type, which is an on-demand type of service, and looking to improve our parking supply to address these needs as they come forward. Another key element, and I'll race to the end here, is fare integration. We're currently doing a comprehensive review of the fare structure across the entire region. We know, we have the introduction of the Presto Smart Card technologies, an enabler, but we now know that trips are becoming much, much more complex, crossing different municipalities.
I'll just stop for a minute.
Yep.
How much more time do you think you have?
I'm almost, I've got two more slides.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Sorry, I tried to talk as fast as I could. And we are revisiting whether or not there's a preferred fare structure. So, we are bringing recommendations to our board on that in the spring. I'm going to, in the effort of time, just maybe zip over this slide, and just, in my closing, just say, we continue to work with all the municipalities in the regions in order to refine the analysis of the program, in particular, the capital program. Our community consultations are evolving and ongoing and growing in their number, and we want to make sure, of course, that the slide I skipped over, the next wave project, that we have a ready pipeline of projects beyond what we already have committed and in the ground. And I apologize for taking a little longer.
Thank you. Any questions or clarification, Counselor Sponga, and then Regional Counselor?
A couple of them. First of all, I appreciate the opportunity for, appreciate your being here and your presentation, and the opportunity to ask you a few questions. This has been an issue that has been very, very at the core of the residents of Ward 5, just simply because the corridor slices, the rail corridor slices right through it. I want to take this opportunity also on behalf of the residents of Ward 5 to thank Mayor Wembine and Regional Counselor Taylor, because I know they've been quite involved at a regional level in terms of discussions that are occurring around the optimization of the rails, of the GO system, and of course, the increased frequency and the opportunities that that brings to our community. Having said that, I want to stress the fact that it's very, very important for us as a municipality, and for the residents that I represent, to have as much access to transit as possible. So, we really welcome these announcements in terms of more frequent traffic and all-day, all-day service. However, I have a number of questions, and I'll try in terms of timelines, some of the most urgent questions. Having said that, and how much we look, we look forward to increased service, we have to realize that, at this point, we have all at-level crossings. There's no grade separation. And really, the proximity between the first crossing in Newmarket, which I believe is Mewla, anyway, the first one in Ward 5, followed immediately after by Timothy Street, sorry, a couple of hundred meters, three hundred meters maybe at most, or half a kilometer, Davis Drive. And there is, of course, slicing through a very dense residential area, and in an area where we want to also capture opportunities for intensification.
Can I get you another question, Joe?
Very quickly, Mr. Mayor, I'll try. How do we, I just wanted to preamble to know that I'm not adverse, that's all, Mr. Mayor, to the service. How can we address the issue of whistles? Right now, the whistle, basically, or the horn, there's got to be a less, to use a term that was used before on this table, archaic way, to announce the fact that, you know, to warn pedestrians and traffic. Right now, the horns are pretty much unisonant from Mewlock all the way to Davis Drive with every train. What can we do to address that issue? Or what can the residents do to go through a process to have that issue addressed?
So, we comply with the Transport Canada Railway Safety Act, and it has a very clear and explicit eight-step procedure. The steps include a formal public notice by the municipality if you want to pass a resolution to agree that the whistles should not be used, and there is a clear process that you can, you can initiate to, for that, if you're interested in eliminating the whistles. And we will work with you to support that process and the cessation, provided, of course, all the safety standards and so forth are met. But we defer on these safety issues to Transport Canada and the Railway Safety Act.
Have there been communities that have been successful in banning whistle, or coming up with alternative measures that still safeguard the safety of those who are crossing, and at the same time, you know, try to respect the quality of life, or try not to impact the quality of life as much as we're seeing it right now in Newmarket?
I personally don't, I mean, I can, we can check and find out, but I'm looking at Nick, who may know, but I'm sure there are some. I don't know how many, but if you'd like more information, I'd be, we can point you in the right direction.
Okay. Have you been in touch with any of our municipal officials to this effect?
On this issue, we, we're very aware of the issue. The fact that I can answer that question as the chief planning officer, we are very aware, because in Newmarket, it's not the only municipality for which this is an issue. So it's, but, but we do follow the Transport Canada, their act requirements and this process, and we work with the municipalities through that mechanism.
Okay, on the same item, last question on this item, on terms of whistles, is there any, anything you can do internally to sort of make, I guess, some of the operators, engineers, sorry, I'm not sure what their title is, aware of the fact that, my understanding is that the horn should be blown once they approach an H sign, it just says H on it, I'm not sure if that's correct or not, but what we're finding right now is basically the horn starts blowing sixteen consecutive horns, I've counted, this morning at six o'clock. Is there anything that can be done to, sixteen, is there anything that can be done to reduce the number of times they actually blow the horn?
So, we, the standards are set in the numbers by what Transport Canada basically requires us to do, so that's usually what we're following. I, we can, we have conveyed, and we can continue to convey the concerns, but we would not want to do anything to compromise our compliance with the Public Safety Act.
Of course.
So, that's one of the, that's one of the constraints that we are.
So in conclusion, we can do something, it's up to us as a municipality to start that process.
Yes.
Excellent, and I think we've got the expertise.
Yeah, but it also involves a level of risk that the municipality needs to be prepared to undertake.
I'm sure, Mr. Mayor, I'm sure that all aspects have to be considered, right. Quick, another question, there's only two more, they're much shorter. One of them is, now, the town of Newmarket, under the places, the provincial paper, Places to Grow, and it's been, is designated as Provincial Urban Center.
Yep.
And it's also a regional urban center, as the result of that same document. Metrolinks and the region have made considerable investments in the Viva Next. So, why is it that here is a regional center with millions and millions of dollars that have been invested on transit in the Viva Next project? And you made a very good point, one of your last slides, about optimizing the RER in terms of connecting with other modes of transportation and transit, just so far. So, why is it that Aurora is getting fifteen-minute service, they're not at Places to Grow, Urban Center, they don't have the Viva Next, and they're getting trained every fifteen minutes and we're not?
So, the Newmarket will be getting two-way all-day service every fifteen minutes, so that's a considerable service level.
Every fifteen?
Yeah, I'm sorry, just to clarify, every thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes, every thirty minutes, two, so did I say fifteen? I apologize. Every thirty minutes. When we are, when we were developing the business case for the Regional Express Rail Program, one of the, one of, I mean, there's several markers in evaluating the extents for, for the ten-year program, is based on ridership uptake, and, and based on that, and also the level of difficulty for implementation, it was felt that Aurora would be the best edge point for the fifteen-minute service, and that's what, that's, that's the business case that was, that was, that was the case that was made for going to Aurora, and thirty, every thirty minutes to Newmarket.
So, if, just for clarification, what you're saying is your business case said that based on ridership, so there's more ridership coming out of Aurora than in Newmarket, so it's, it's a bigger center in terms of urban use and transit use than Newmarket, so.
No, that's, that's not what I was saying. Ridership is one of the measures for, as is deliverability, so the ability to build and construct and so forth. So, there's, there's about forty markers that we measure against in the business case, and in that evaluation, it was deemed, given the constraints of the ten-year period, the, the performance and what we own in terms of corridors, even though ownership is not really an issue with Berry, because we own all of the Berry corridor, it was determined that Aurora would be the turnaround point for the fifteen-minute service.
You will indulge me, and I understand that, you know, you're only responsible for GO rail operations, that's what your level of expertise is, but it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, and I don't know, I'll just keep that comment to myself, but it doesn't make a lot of sense to myself to see Metrolinks make such a huge investment in Viva Next on Davis Drive and Young Street, and then say that the business case for more frequent rail service is only in Aurora, seems to be a little bit of disconnect there. The question I'd like to ask is like, why didn't you put the Viva Next in Wellington? But I'll leave that to, to the future. My last question is, again, Ward Five alone, and that's the area that goes from Mewlock to Davis, Viva and Young, just to give you perspective, within, I'd say, a kilometer and a half, maybe less, definitely no more than two kilometers, there are four level crossings. We just spent millions of dollars on the Davis Drive, again, Metrolinks, on the Davis Drive infrastructure, which we really appreciate. But when we hear about grade separation and potential new station, kind of leaves us to wonder, if we are going to get even a every thirty-minute service, what happens is the potentially, I'm not sure if the trains will intersect when coming, when going, I'm not sure, but that is going to have a very significant impact on east-west corridors, Mewlock, Water Street, Timothy Street, Davis Drive. Traffic on Water, Gorham, Eagle, right now is backed up east into Gorham, way past Maple Street, a couple of kilometers.
Do I have you at ten minutes?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, last, this will be my last question. What are you planning to address those issues? Will there be any grade separations implemented in Newmarket?
Ms. Wu?
Ms. Wu, and what are we doing in terms of a new transit station? Is it going to be a Davis Drive, so what's going to happen?
Ms. Wu, go ahead.
Thank you.
So, through your chair, as I mentioned earlier, we're doing a comprehensive review of all crossings, and that evaluation is underway as we speak. So, once that evaluation is complete, we're, we're going to be measuring based, because we actually can't, probably cannot afford to do every single rail crossing in all seven corridors, so we will have to prioritize the most critical ones, and the ones that have the, that will best perform and enable, because there's other ways to deal with the, the frequency in addition to just a separation. There are, you know, we can put down barriers and so forth, it interrupts, some of them may interrupt local traffic, but we, you know, in the ten-year period, we will have to make choices.
Sorry, in conclusion, Mr. Mayor, this is a very critical place. There is already barriers to come down, and four streets, as I said, and less than two kilometers away from each other, and traffic is backed up for two kilometers. So, are these, is this evaluation in these capital improvements, are these going to happen prior to the thirty-minute service, or will we have to face thirty-minute service with no grade separation, and basically see an increment in terms of the traffic backups that we have now through peak hours when the trains are coming in?
Ms. Wu?
So, I can't answer your question right now, because part of the evaluation will inform our phasing of the program, and that is one of the considerations exactly, the sequencing of all these pieces.
Please consider this as a critical place.
Okay, thank you. Regional Counselor?
Thanks very much, thanks for the presentation. Just to start with, I pointed out that the first question today was on train whistles. At the open house recently, which was incredibly well-attended, everyone wanted to talk about the train whistle, myself, and others. So I just, my suggestion would be that, certainly at the open house, but here as well, and I know you had timeline restrictions, but at the open house, I think we need information on the train whistles issue. I mean, it needs, I was at the open house, and there's no boards on it, and I, you know, I was answering the question over and over and over. The long and the short of it, of course, is that we've known for quite some time at this table that we can, we can take steps forward in this area, but it takes, it does involve some liability, and it does involve quite a bit of cost per intersection. Obviously, at least myself, want to wait and see what happens with grade crossings, because I wouldn't want to implement the process and the procedure, as lengthy as it costs it is, to find out that grade separation is going to solve the problem. So I think we need to see the results of that study before moving on that issue. I always learn something new, and I've been to many of these meetings now, and many open houses, and corridor meetings, and it's, and it's partially because it's a work in progress, there's always going to be new information, but I had, I was under the impression, from an email, actually, I have, from, from Metrolinks, but that the twinning of the tracks was not going to be continuous. It is, there's going to be, and I, and I had not heard, I'd heard of passing tracks, but I hadn't heard about a third track, possibly. So, are the tracks getting twinned the entire distance, or?
No, the, the addition, if you go to, I apologize, if you.
Because here it says adding a second track.
If you're on slide, I hope it has a number, slide twenty-four in the appendix.
Okay.
You have the appendix, right? Yes, you do, so let me just go here. This is very difficult to read diagram, but right here where you see Berry.
Yeah.
Red is a new track, and the red little, sort of, I don't know what you call that.
Bump oats?
Bump, is what we refer to as the passing track. So, the Berry corridor has, we're doubling the track up to Aurora, then there's a series of passing tracks along the way.
So, okay, so it's, because it does say adding a second track.
I guess it should have meant adding a second track in the Berry corridor to Aurora.
Okay. The, the passing tracks you've got there north of Aurora, and are those locations now defined?
No.
They're not?
They're, they're, a lot of these, even the grade crossings identified here, I should note, are placeholders.
Okay.
Because we're going through this whole evaluation.
And the third track, that's something I definitely hadn't heard before. Does that mean just, I don't understand, like, that would be then continuing from Aurora and possibly going all the way up now, or?
I don't know what third track is. Nick, come in. Nick does all the infrastructure, so he's going to.
Not all of the infrastructure, thank you.
So this piece here.
Now, this is being, maybe if you'd identify yourself, sir?
Identify.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, I'm Nick Spencer, I'm the director of the Berry corridor for Capital Infrastructure. The third track is contemplated in the future as a passing track. We are, it will not be implemented as we go forward. There will be double tracks starting from about the Davenport Diamond all the way up to Aurora, there'll be a full double track. The third track is considered to be future, as running down from East Gwillingbury all the way down, down to the southern part of the corridor, but it's a future as an express track.
And so it's not contemplated in this under-ten-year period?
No, it's not contemplated in the ten-year period, and it's just, we're getting the EA to facilitate for that sometime in the future.
Okay, I think that's important to note that. Okay, super, thank you. The, you also, you also state that you've got this additional station analysis is down to a shortlist of fifty now, I just want to confirm that Mewlock is on that.
Yes, Mewlock is in the fifty.
Okay. And Mewlock Station, it, just out of curiosity, I'm going to warn you in advance, this is a trick question, but it's, but it's a valid question, but the, the decision that I've been told many, many times by the municipal itself, which is a decision at this point, which is final, on going to, coming to Newmarket with fifteen-minute service, would that be revisited if a new station was added at Mewlock, because that would not have been considered at the time of the original decision?
I don't know the answer to that question, and I, I mean, part of this, the development of the infrastructure plan, the service plan, the phasing plan, and the implementation plan is somewhat iterative, and as we get more and more detail, we fine-tune. Whether or not it changes or not, I'm not, I can't say at this point.
All right, but it's at least.
Well, we learn more as we do more detailed work, when we do an EA, and so, yes.
And if, if, if a Mewlock Station isn't moving forward immediately, or relatively immediately, that shorter timeframe, and when they look at it, the business case will consider the additional cost of parking you'll need in Aurora with fifteen-minute service, and good chunks of Newmarket going there, or Davis Drive with the parking constraints it has, because this would solve that issue to a certain degree, if not substantially.
Through your, Mr. Mayor, the analysis looks at, especially at the, at the regional scale, the impacts of a new station, or even existing stations relative to where people will drive instead, and what that will do. We're reviewing all our parking strategy relative, not only to new stations, but existing stations.
Is it, is it accurate to state that I was told previously, at a couple of circumstances, that what's being referred to as thirty-minute service at Newmarket could be, in fact, between twenty and thirty minutes? Or is that not correct? Because I've been told that before.
I'm not sure, I don't know that that's necessarily correct. I haven't heard, I haven't heard, I have not heard that before, so.
Okay. All righty. Just keep moving here. I think I have one more question, but I'll, I'll leave it there for now, thank you.
Thank you. My question is with respect to the hub studies, and it relates to the first and last mile discussion that you had earlier. My understanding is, is that the, we do have a hub study planned for either Q4 of 2015, Q1 of 16, is that correct? And if so, or Mr. Sheldon, maybe if you could clarify that, that's my understanding, we have some capital budgeting, or some funding budget for that timeframe, do we not?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have a budget that was set for 2015, and it relates to, excuse me, to a conversation that we did have with Metrolinks and GO and Viva from, I guess, about a year and a half ago now. So I did warn Leslie that this question might come up, to be able to answer that in terms of the timing, so I'll turn it over to you, Leslie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the timing is actually really good timing, insofar as, as that work is progressing that we're doing jointly with your staff, it becomes important input to the, to the station analysis in its total, because now we have, we will have more detailed information to input into our station analysis. So I think that's, it's very timely, that this was contemplated ahead of time.
Okay, and that's combined with, with Metrolinks, with Viva Next, and with the municipal staff, and particularly in light of the challenges that we have with parking at the one station that we do have. So I think it's important, so that'll start probably within the next six months. Mr. Sheldon?
That is our hope, Mr. Mayor. Just in terms of the partners around the table, the region of York would be around the table as well, and my understanding is that there would be a significant dialogue with the various stakeholders, including landowners in that area.
And public consultation?
Yeah.
Good, thank you. Any other questions? Regional Counselor?
Yeah, so the last question I had was, and I believe you shared this with us once before, I'm just trying to recall, the estimated timeline for the grade separation study to be completed.
Ooh, I don't know the answer to that. I'll have to get back to you the answer to that question, I don't know, and I'm looking at Nick.
It is next year, though, I know, I'm pretty sure I was told that, I just can't remember.
Oh, we're obviously, Mr. Mayor, we're trying to accelerate the process as quickly as you can, because of, obviously, because of the impending work that's coming, so, but it's still a work in progress.
Well, I'm happy to, through the staff, to get that information to you, or the clerk, whoever you'd like.
And if I could just close by, reiterating some of the, the one comment by Councilor Sponga, is that obviously grade separations are a concern for everybody, I think there's a hundred and seventy-four of them that you have, that you've got to look at, or some large number like that. And we've got four of them, and they're all meaningful to us as to other towns, but Davis Drive, as complicated as it is, trying to imagine thirty-two-plus trips per day going across there, you know, to add some humor to this, we might have to rename the BRT to something else if, if we don't have a grade separation. So I really hope, and I assume that the study will look at not only traffic volumes, but other interaction with other, other types of transit uses, so, because it's, I'm hard to imagine how we don't. to imagine how we don't address that, but. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bazant?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is with respect to the Richmond Hill line glowing up to Bloomington. It just sort of ends, ends there, but the Aurora already has a station at Wellington, so it just, how far out is the Bloomington station intended to be and is it?
No, it's not in the extension.
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We're looking at going out for construction probably beginning of 2017, so you're looking at another couple of years after that before it comes into service.
So that line doesn't exist at all now or?
The Richmond Hill line does exist.
And ends where?
But our service ends at Richmond Hill, at Newkirk.
Okay, so the, the plan is then to bring it up to, to Bloomington and, and what? How, I'm just trying to think of how far from the existing Wellington Aurora Go station.
So right now, there's an interim step too, that there's a new station being constructed as we speak.
Gormley.
At Gormley, which is at Stovall and the 404 area, which will be open probably, or last time I've looked at the schedule, we're looking at summer of next year. And then the Bloomington station, which is further north, will be determined at that point and that'll be a few years later.
So Bloomington and 404 approximately?
Correct.
Okay. Now, would that potentially have some impact on the decision about the priority to make changes to Newmarket? Because I'm just thinking that if, if traffic goes, or if people go to either the Wellington station or, or just a little further east to 404, then that would sort of take away some of the traffic from north of Aurora and the demand would, would change, the demand pattern would change.
But those are things that we're looking at. We try to understand proximity and trips and people's origins and destinations and we try to evaluate and forecast when we introduce a station or a new station, what, how, what it will impact and that will be part of deciding in the decision-making. The, the level of service also plays into it. So Richmond Hill in the regional express rail program doesn't, won't have the frequency of service that the Berry corridor will.
Okay, so it would still stay?
It will have less frequent service, yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. There being no further questions. Appreciate you taking the time to come forward and there's still a lot of questions that we need to address. Appreciate the, the amount of time that you'd spent with the, the public meeting that we had just last week. The turnout was quite, quite good and it shows the community's interest in expanding the options that we have. So we're looking forward to that. In my own mind, the difference between 15-minute and 30-minute services doesn't change the world, I think immensely, although I think eventually we'll need to get there, but I'd rather see us easing into that and responding to the demand as we go forward. But the Mulock Station, I think, can provide a ton of relief, both for the Aurora parking, for the Newmarket parking and create more options, so. So that's, that's one item that I'd like to see as a priority in terms of creating some solutions for our community and maybe extending the 15-minute service to that point. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll stay engaged and we're looking forward to progress as it is made available. A motion to receive the presentation, please. Councillor Fay, Councillor Kerwin, all those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Next item is declarations of pecuniary interest. I should, we did take the addendum, right?
Yeah.
Yep. So are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? I will say that my home is on the edge of the 200-meter boundary with respect to the, the proposed community gardens, but I don't see that, that is close enough to, to require a declaration of pecuniary interest. I'll just let people know that it's there, that I don't feel that there's a pecuniary interest that's created as a result of that. Deputations, we have a deputation request with respect to item number 13, Mr. Blomstein. As you know, we permit five minutes.
Mr. Mayor, just for procedure, I've asked for two deputations today. Did you want me to stay up after the first one and?
Well, we'll deal with the first deputation.
Fair enough.
We'll bring forward the issue and then we'll do the second deputation.
This one is regarding councillor Twinney's motion, which is about ensuring underground service lines, which she's, she's got on the agenda for today. And I'd like to, to comment on it as an insurance broker, mostly to voice my opinion against it, you know, and, and hope that you will understand the reasons why, but also to understand what the insurance industry already does. As an insurance broker, I want to present what, at least what one of our companies does in, in terms of addressing this, because it's my belief that the private sector's got this issue already handled. So what I've got on the screen right here is what, at least one of the companies that I represent in my office presents with regards to underground service lines, and these would be water lines or electrical lines or whatever that could be damaged, but the homeowner is accountable for, not the, not the town. This particular company, there's really no underwriting involved in terms of purchasing this coverage. As long as you qualify for home insurance, you can purchase this as an optional coverage available. It's only $27 a year and it covers the homeowner up to $10,000, you know, for any damage to an underground service line. So like I said, it's readily available. I don't think there's any reason to have the government step in and, you know, provide a service that the private sector's already got covered and it's not expensive. The coverage is, you know, like I said, there's no underwriting hoops to jump through or anything like that. And it's, it's my opinion that, you know, if, if anyone's asking for this coverage and doesn't seem to be able to find it, that you just refer your constituent over to their local insurance broker. There's a number of us in, in Newmarket and I'm sure anyone can, can help them provide this, this coverage if it's needed. So that's my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions, clarification? Councillor Twinney?
Just a motion to receive, thank you.
Motion to receive.
Perhaps we can bring forward my motion at this point? Would that be appropriate since?
Sure. I'll need a second for the motion to receive. Regional councillor. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Madam Carrie? Thank you. All right, then let's bring forward item number 13, which is the notice of motion. Put the motion forward, please councillor.
Should I put the motion forward?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'll, I'll put the motion forward as it stands and then, and then perhaps I can just fill in my colleagues a little bit about the background about bringing this forward.
So you're moving the motion that is presented in the agenda?
Correct.
Is there a second? Councillor Fay?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thank you for your deputation, Mr. Blomstein. I totally agree with everything you're saying here. This is exactly what actually the report is going to be asking to bring forward to council. Just to give you a little bit of background about it, I was approached by a resident one of my ward meetings about the city of Hamilton partnering with an insurance company to basically allowing residents to get insurance for the coverage that, of the pipes that go underneath their residential property. And in no way is this a motion to have government step in and insure for the residents, but basically just allowing residents to know, it's more of a marketing piece of allowing residents to be very familiar with the, the aspect that they are perhaps not insured through their insurance company. And the city of Hamilton did quite a bit of work with this. I've already approached Mr. Nohammer, our commissioner last year, I guess, about this and, and I felt that this was probably the best move was to, to go to council to bring this, the report back to, to the rest of council to take a look at it more in depth. But again, it, it's not, it's not for, it wasn't, the city of Hamilton didn't provide the insurance for them. They were, the, the residents were, were getting the insurance themselves, but many residents don't realize that when there's something like this happens and their pipes break, and it's happened in my ward, that unless it, unless it goes underneath the municipal property, that they're responsible for it. And many times in older areas such as myself and, and residents are perhaps on a, on a, on a tight budget, they didn't realize that they're now responsible for it. So I look forward to the, the information coming back from, from staff and, and then we can move, go forward from, at that point, what, what direction we want to take it when we get that information back.
Thank you. Councillor Fay is the second.
Nope, councillor, councillor Twinney said it all. I just want to emphasize that, and I'm sorry if the public was under this impression, but nobody really considered that the town would be providing this insurance. It's more of an education process to let people know that this is available and the town does not cover the portion that's under their, their property.
Thank you. Any further discussion by any other member? Councillor Hampton?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just the staff, to provide such a report, can you give us some kind of, excuse me, I need a glass of water. How much time would be required to produce such a report? Is it going to be a lengthy process for staff or something pretty easy?
Mr. Nohammer?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. We do have some information that we were able to glean from Hamilton's efforts in this regard. My, my sense is that we are going to basically summarize the insurance options that are available to homeowners without coming forward with a, a strong indication that the town necessarily becomes involved. So I think a summary of the information could be made available, you know, within the next 30 to 60 days and, you know, I think we could put a report on to committee very early in the new year.
Thank you. I just, I guess the answer I'm looking for, thank you for what you've said, just, is this like a lengthy process, a lot of work for staff to produce for, to provide a report to council on this or is it fairly simple?
Mr. Nohammer?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. Just, just to reiterate, I, I believe it's going to be a summary of the information that's fairly readily available.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussions? I'll call the question and all those in favor? Any opposed? Madam Carrie? Thank you. Next item is a deputation for Mr. Blomstein with respect to item number 16, and I believe that is the budget. Is that what it relates to? Okay. Mr. Blomstein, you have five minutes. We will not likely bring the budget discussions forward following this deputation because of the extent of the, the agenda and the extent of the budget discussions as well. So go ahead, sir.
So I wanted to talk about the town page and particularly I want to talk about, you know, whether it's appropriate or not to continue to advertise the town page within the Newmarket era and certainly recommend that the town look at other options that are available and there's, there's a number of them that, that I believe that you should be looking at before the Newmarket era. Through a Freedom of Information report, I discovered that the town spends just over $100,000 annually on ads in the Newmarket era. I mean, most of this comes from ads presented by the communications department, but there are, there are ads placed all over the place, even council members would, would place ads in the newspaper. And a lot of these are important information. I'm not disputing that whatsoever, but, you know, things like notice of public events, upcoming meetings, public tenders, those types of things, the public has a right to know this information and certainly making it public through a newspaper is, is a good Despite the large sum of money though, this, this money is actually kind of hidden within the, within the budget itself. It shows up as advertising within the communications budget or it shows up in other departments as, as advertising in that particular way. I'd almost, if I was going to make a recommendation, is to, to give it a separate line item because it is a significant amount of money and that would be, you know, something that you can, you can take for what it is. The reason I'm bringing this up right now is because this is on the agenda. So you're, you're talking about the budget today, you're talking about it next week in a special committee or the whole, so it's the appropriate time to, to start mentioning about, about the era and the amount of money that's going towards it. I also wanted to make mention that council often votes to publish things within the era. If it's Heart and Stroke Month or if it's, you know, a walkathon or some other community group has got an announcement, you'll vote to not only receive that as it's Heart and Stroke Month or whatever, you'll publish it on the town and Newmarket website and you'll, you, we'll move it to go on to the, the town page as well. My issue has to do with conflict of interest and particularly this clause that I've, that I put up on, on the, the screen here for you today. And even the code of conduct comes into question as well, you know, in terms of financial interest and who's getting a, a boost from advertising within the era. And what I want to bring to council's attention is that the deputy mayor is married to somebody who is a senior vice president at Metroland Media, who is the owner of the Newmarket era. And not because she's not entitled to that job or whatever else, but I, as a, as a resident and as a taxpayer, concerned with public money going into the family bank account of a council member. So that's my reason for, for saying to you that you really need to look at other alternatives. For the sake of being transparent, even today, it's up for the budget. You had an opportunity when it was, you know, was asked for about pecuniary interest and, you know, whether to approve the money that's going to go to the era next year and there was no mention of it again today. So with that respect, you know, I'm asking for you to look at alternatives because mistakes have been made in the past. I just don't want to see them being made in the future and that you make sure that we're not repeating these things.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of clarification? Regional councillor?
Thanks very much. Mr. Blomstein, just want to, Jack, just as you've mentioned, it's important to disclose any potential conflicts or, or biases and so could you disclose if you or, or your family have ever had any legal interaction with the Newmarket era?
We have recently, family members recently come to a settlement with the era.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
But that's not the reason why I'm bringing this up today. I'm bringing it up today because, you know, the, to me, the conflict of interest is, is plain.
Thank you. Is there, are there any other questions, clarification? I think there's, I'll take a motion then to receive this deputation. Motion to receive it. Regional councillor, councillor Bazant, all those in favor? Madam Carrie? I think, thank you. There's appropriate processes for declarations of interest and those, I think those processes are in place and those processes are being followed. Next item is consent items and we're dealing with items number two to 11 and then items number 16 to 19. Are there any items that members wish to deal with separately? Regional councillor?
Thank you. Thank you.
That's it? Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Item number six, community gardens. Is item number 12 an action item? Yes, it is an action item. But is this being dealt with by, by consent? It's listed as an action item because there's some inaccuracies in that petition that I'd like dealt with. So do we need to pull that? No, it's an action item. All right, so we'll deal with that under the action.
Sorry, no, it isn't technically an action item, it's, it's to be dealt with, so it just happens to fall into that category. So it can be separated out.
All right, I do want to separate it out because I think that there's some misinformation that needs to be dealt with. So we'll pull out item number 12. All right then, could I have a motion, please, to adopt items number eight, nine, 10, 11 and 16? No, that's 16 is the, is the joint. Items number 17, 18, 19 and 20, I believe, right? 16, that's the report of the joint draft budget. Do you want to deal with that on consent?
No, I'm looking for what's on the company.
I was going to say.
I'm looking for the chart.
Yeah. I was going to say, one heck of a report if we're dealing with a budget on consent. Okay. consent. Okay. So again, I'll, I'll come back. What I'd like to be dealt with by consent is item number eight, library board minutes, number nine, BIA minutes, number ten, which is an item coming out of the BIA minutes, number eleven is outstanding matters, number twelve, number fourteen is going to be dealt with separately, number fifteen is receiving the draft budget. So we should, we should keep fifteen and sixteen separate, and then seventeen to twenty, to nineteen, actually. Could I have a motion then?
Can we pull nineteen or not?
Nineteen. If you wished it pulled, then we will pull it.
I'd like to pull it.
Okay. So then seventeen and eighteen. So anybody wish clarification on that? Because I want to be clear. So we're, could I have a motion then? And again, item number two, adopt if I consent, item number eight, nine, ten, eleven, fourteen, seventeen, and eighteen. Well, not fourteen. That's, that's the close session.
Eight, nine, ten, eleven.
Eight, nine, ten, eleven, seventeen, and eighteen is what we got down to. Is that your motion, Counselor? From public? Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Twinnie, all those in favor? Good. Madam Carrie, thank you. Item number three then is the Northern Six Waste Collection Report. There are some recommendations. Could I have a mover and a second for those?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. To adopt the recommendations?
Nope, not quite.
Okay. And the motion is?
Thanks. So item three is to put in my notes here. Yeah, I, two, two changes I'd like to propose, and I suspect we might want to load on them separately, but to move the recommendations except for two and three, those are the ones that are to be amended. Item two, I would like to change so that we are directing staff to develop the service level criteria and customer service response to be, not, not to be included in the request for proposal, but to be developed for either, for a third party of one age or another, either in a municipality or a private sector that specializes in customer service. I'll, I'll speak to that after. I'll, I'll refer to the other change next. And number three refers to the appendix that, that puts forward for our consideration bag limits. And so the amendment would be to not implement the bag limits. So that would be, I guess, sorry for, number two, three, and four, I believe, are the ones that address that on the appendix.
I think four is the bag limits. In the recommendations?
No, no, I'm talking about the appendix items, because it just refers us to appendix A, so I don't want to eliminate the entire appendix, because I suspect staff has some other things in there that they would like to have. So appears, I think, in there, number Yeah, one is premises, one is ADUs, and one is commercial institutional. So that we do not place bag limits as per items two, three, and four of appendix A. And I'll speak to that, too, at the appropriate time.
Okay. Do I have a second, or? Counselor Twinnie, would you like to speak to the recommendations as the mover then, Regional Counselor?
Thanks very much. Yeah, first of all, I, I speak to the item two, and I know that staff have, are addressing this concern, and they pointed out in the report that this was raised by council previously, I, I want to say at least a year, if not two years ago, to flag this. And so I appreciate them bringing this forward for our consideration. The, my, my fairly strong feeling on this is that, through my experience as, as a member of council and interacting with the public over a number of years, is that, that customer service is not necessarily a specialty or core service of a municipal, or of a waste collection company. Having said that, New Market has won awards for customer service, for our customer service department, and we get the metrics, and quite frankly, I think our, our staff do an outstanding job in this area. And, and whether it's ourselves, and I understand we're operating under N six agreement, whether that's ourselves that does it on behalf, or another municipality that does it on behalf of us, even another municipality, well, I, I don't know their customer service as well, but municipalities are specialists in customer service. That is hopefully what we excel at. That's our, you know, our front line. Dealing with the public is what we do. And, and frankly, it allows, I think, members of council, who are often a frontline of customer service, to interact more seamlessly than through a waste collection company. The, there has been, you know, and I, I don't want to go into great detail, but I'm certainly, I'm not alone on council of having, I suspect, with having had members of the public on more than one occasion, expressed frustration about that aspect of, of dealing with, dealing with the issue of customer service and, and waste management. So in, my belief is also is that we have actually contracted out the New Market Customer Service Department to other municipalities for other purposes, the region, I believe, for Green Bin rollout, or not, might have been Green Bin, but we've contracted it to the region and other entities. So we certainly, it is a possibility. And now I understand that we've got to work with the N six and see where this goes. But for now, my strong preference and the direction I'd like to propose that we go in putting forward this is that we, we try to manage this either through ourselves, one of the N six partners, or a company that specializes in customer service. And again, and I'll stop there, but not, not a waste management company that does not have this as a core, a core attribute. Do you want to deal with one at a time?
Yeah, let's deal with them one at a time. So the, what you're speaking to then is item, in the, in the agenda, is item A subsection II, and that is developing the service level criteria and customer service. I think it's the same thing.
Yeah, just one.
Yep. But except that it's suggesting that it be included in the request for proposals.
Yes.
And you're suggesting that it not be included, right? We would still want to establish the service level criteria?
Correct.
Okay. So we would just delete the, that portion of that paragraph, or were you deleting the whole paragraph?
I'd like to keep recommendation two in, in there, and that's staff develop service level criteria for customer service and response to, not to be included with request for proposal, but to be, to be tendered separately to a, to a, an N six partner or a third-party customer service provider.
So we're limiting that to say not.
If that seems right phrasing, or if that's too restrictive, or maybe there's a, a way of phrasing it.
Any thoughts, Mr. Shelton, that would facilitate it?
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that the Director of Public Works be given the opportunity to speak to both items. And on this one, just to set out some of the challenges we have around the N six table to try to get uniformity. And, you know, if there's an item that you would prefer not be on the table, I think our preference would be that you give us that direction and ask us to come back. We do need to still talk to the N six. CIOs, we have an upcoming meeting, and the N six directors of public works are also talking. Some are in favor of the contractor having the customer service or the opportunity to bid and so on. So we just have to see what's feasible. And Chris could comment further if you'd like.
Mr. Calamuto?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, staff are looking at developing the service level criteria, and the options that were given were to go out to municipalities of the N six with respect to the RFP in the solid waste contractor, and also to a third party that may be able to provide that service. As the CIO mentioned, this is, this would be an N six contract. So we are going forward with these reports to listen to our respective councils, then come back and meet to see what our prospective councils had to say with respect to that, and then report back. Absolutely. And again, if there are, because the contractor would be providing the physical service, a third party would have to reach out to the contractor that's actually picking up the material anyways, in certain circumstances, just to get the feedback and to do some investigative works.
Thank you.
Sorry, no, I mean, I'm happy to, I, I think what I'm hearing from Mr. Shelton is that perhaps a different type of language there, that at this point maybe, that we just change that altogether to say that, that council, that council directs staff to, to work with our N six partners and explore the opportunities for
Options.
Options. But I really would like it to state, though, that, to look, to look to options for customer service outside of the, outside of the contract.
Mr. Shelton?
That, that, something to that effect is, would, would help us where we can go back to the table and, and set out what are council preferences. But a decision hasn't been made by council. We'd be back to you with the results of the discussion with that group. We do have a, an excellent call service, call center in our, our customer service center. We have put that on the table as something that could possibly be used by the N six. The discussion that I was at, the N six, wanted to see all of the options on the table, and recognizing the point Chris made, that there's a certain amount of customer service that the, the contractor has to do anyway. So if we know your preferences on any of these items, we can take them back and then get back to you. And, and just to reinforce what you said about our, our customer service center, we have rolled out the Richmond Hill Blue Box Green Bin Program, the Region of Halton, the Region of York Water for Tomorrow Program, all of that. So we do have experience dealing with large items, but you have to have, you know, everyone on board to do that.
Okay. Well, I think the, the second wording, did you get that, Andrew? Yeah. So I think the second wording is probably more appropriate. Doesn't have a final decision, shows we're working with our partners to, but, but is clear on the direction. Because I do also want to make sure that, that's, that's clear, that that's a strong, strong preference. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. The second?
Yeah, no, I, I think I'm comfortable with that. I, I am, I am comfortable with that. Considering, you know, I mean, I guess that's one of our concerns, and we've all been around the last few years where we've had some issues with, with the present contractor and, and dealing with customer service, with them dealing with it. And I certainly think that we need to make sure that we, moving forward with the, whoever gets the contract for the next tender, that we are able to provide great customer service for our residents. Because I, I don't think it's been in place in the, in the past for them. It's been a little bit disconnected, and, and to sort of tie up those loose ends, I think will, will make it a lot, a lot better for our residents and, and for the town to be a little bit more seamless. So I, I look forward to seeing what comes back from that.
Thank you. Counselor Bazanz?
Thank you. I kind of wonder whether part of this is being colored by the fact that there has been a lot of concern with the current providers' less-than-stellar performance on customer service. And, you know, I, I would want to ask, you know, whether by, by trying to respond to a bad situation, we may be going down the path of trying to create something that isn't really going to be an improvement, but rather is just trying to avoid the situation that we've had. If I can be a little more clear. One of the things I think that, that residents look for is somebody who's going to respond when their green bin, or their blue bin, or their garbage hasn't been picked up after 4:30. And if we're looking at, at continuing a customer service that is based on sort of our town operating hours, I don't know that we're necessarily going to improve the value to, to residents of not being able to have somebody who's, who can respond, or give an answer, or send a truck out, or what have you. So I'm just wondering whether, rather than trying to create a new process, it wouldn't be better to embed in the RFP the requirement that customer service really do meet, meet the standards that we're setting in terms of response time and ability to identify why a problem may have happened and to correct that problem in a timely way. So I think that it's, that's really a key part, is just to make sure that however we draft that, the language around the requirements and service standards, that that really is, is something that, that is heightened and important. I'm also a little concerned that if you have another bought, another party doing all customer service, that, you know, that means you've just added another layer, and, you know, I'd be interested in knowing what the cost of that, if we have to add, you know, another party into that process, as opposed to making this part of what the, the service provider includes in, in what they deliver.
Thank you. Mr. Calamuto?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out that we are learning from experience here, and the current contractor does not have the, the KPI set out in the contract. And through these learning experiences with a level of service, and obviously with our own customer service department being award-winning, we have gathered up those, those key performance indicators to include in RFPs. Right now, the way that the report is written, we would be going out to the other N six municipalities, including ourselves. We would be going out to a third party, and we would also be going out to the contractor that selected for the garbage itself, just to see what their prices would be, how they would create that level of service, how they would meet those KPIs. And all of those submissions would be brought back to these council chambers for council to discuss.
So they intended to include all of the options, contractor, third party, and municipal?
That is the intent, unless this council directs otherwise. We can do whatever council decides. However, that's the way that it was contemplated through the N six. And then those, then we would have fulsome idea of what those costs, exactly how they would provide those services. And then the, those, both the cost and the level of service would be brought back to council for additional consideration before anything is awarded at all.
Okay. And the way I read the motion, that it, that it permits us to do all of, all of the above. Regional counselor, further comments?
Thanks very much. Yeah, I, I mean, I understand that that was the process recommended. My concern is, is that it's one thing to say it'll be brought back to council for consideration, but we've already, you know, we're already recognizing right away that even the directions being, that I'm putting forward right now, we have to handle it very delicately. So it can be brought back to us at the point of completion, but there's six other communities. And my, my concern is, is that, you know, the, the low cost, which will probably be the lower cost of customer service provided by the contractor, will be lower cost for a reason. But it'll be attractive enough to win that support. And I think now is the time to have the conversation with our N six partners about quality of service. And, you know, and that's why the, the recommendation is to, to work towards that, but to make it clear that what our preference is. Because I think if we leave it open to the three, we're going to end up finding ourselves boxed in by the complex process of N six agreement into dealing with the lower cost, frankly, lower service aspect that is offered. And, you know, as for Counselor Sanders, your comments, I mean, you know, worried about creating a new process, and I think that was the phrase you used, this isn't creating a new process. As was pointed out by Mr. Shelton, we've done this for ourselves, for Halton Region, for York Region, for Stoville. This is something that is, this managing customer service for waste or water for tomorrow related projects is frankly what we're, we're experts in. And, you know, I, I, obviously we have to consider cost, and we'll look at everything that comes back. But my, I have to say, I've heard, compared to issues, and you get little bits of pockets of people concerned about this issue, that issue, I've consistently had feedback from the residents, asking me point blank, why does, why do I have to talk to a person at a, a waste company that I can't, you know, get the response from, or can't get, why can't I talk to the town? And I've had like a pretty high level of frustration with this. And I, and I, you know, I, I think, at least for myself, I need to, I need to recognize that, that kind of public feedback, and it's not been just one or two people by any means. And so I, I think that, because it's not creating a new process, because it's something we're, we're expert in, I'd like to think we can, we can find a way to do this on behalf of, or if one of the others want to do it as a part, you know, some combination, we can see. But I really have heard from a lot of people concerned, and it's, and I don't think it's just about this contractor. I think it's because this is not what they do. And we provide a higher level of customer service, because that's the business we're in. So I've been hearing this for many years, and I asked to have this flagged when this time came, because, you know, I knew it was something that many people wanted to see addressed. And so I think we have the ability, but I And so I think we have the ability, but I recognize that we have to work with our partners, so if we can, if we can go to them and have that conversation with, through staff, and say, you know, we're supposed to bring back feedback, that's the point of this, and the feedback from this council, perhaps is, or perhaps isn't, I don't know until the vote occurs, but is that a strong preference, and hoping we can find a way to, to make sure that we put quality of service on this one, equal to cost.
Thank you. Counselor Brumholt?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to our director. Currently, when a resident calls in and has a concern about their, their, their garbage or their recycling, is it their responsibility to redirect them to GFL, or are they now included in the process anyway?
Mr. Calamuto?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If the town is the, receives the first call, the town usually directs them to GFL to rectify the situation. If the resident is unhappy with the situation, or anything from GFL, then that resident does call back, and we rectify the situation in the back end, through us and GFL.
Right. So is it a fair statement to say that our customer service department is already doing more work than, say, they should be, and it's not exactly their responsibility?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Sometimes the residents do call the town first, and again, then we do receive the calls, and we do deal with the multitude of calls that do come in. Again, the first directive is to give it to GFL for them to rectify the situation if possible, and then again, if not, then they, then the town is called once again.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hampton?
Thank you. I'll be supporting this item. I also, I've received a number of calls from residents who have made calls to our, our contractor and have not received the service that we've, they feel that they should be getting, or the response that they, or the customer service experience that they feel they should be getting. So I think we should be looking at this and looking at the costs of what, the potential costs will be. This is a core service that we provide to the residents. It's, it's garbage, but it's very important to our residents, so are we supporting it?
Thank you. Counselor Twitty?
One of the key issues, too, is that the residents of New Market, they, they pay their taxes to the town of New Market for garbage pickup. It's an essential service, one of our main services that we provide. And when they have, when they have to deal with a numerous number of customer service areas, either going, you know, whether they phone the town first, or then they're directed to phone GFL, and GFL doesn't respond, and we've heard it over and over again, I, I think that, that needs to be streamlined. And I think this process of going out to the N six and hopefully getting everybody on board to having a more streamlined method of dealing with it, which would be a core, one person, one customer service entity that would take care of it all, would cause less confusion and also better service to our residents. So at the end of the day, I, I support this, and I look forward to what comes back from it. I think even our neighboring municipalities, I've heard, are very, are very frustrated, too, with, with how things have been dealt with. And I, and I know, you know, perhaps it was just because this particular garbage contractor didn't meet the, the, the customer service levels that we had hoped for, but at the end of the day, I think that the, their service is picking up garbage. It's not manning the phone lines and taking care of it. So I think this is going to be something that will be well-received, and I'm hoping, I, like I said, I look forward to seeing what comes back from it.
Thank you. Initially, maybe if I could just clarify the motion as it stands now?
That staff are to work with the N six partners to develop service-level criteria for customer service and response, and opportunities to provide customer service outside the scope of the waste control contract.
So the, so that would exclude the contractor from, from being engaged in the customer service? Is that the intent? Regional counselor, I just want to be?
No, no. I think the intent, per the, per the conversation with our CIO, is, is that, that's the conversation, the direction this council wants to go on, the conversation that we're asking staff to have with the N six partners, but it's not a final decision, that that's the, that that is, you know, our, yeah, so it's not set in stone. Because I think, as, as pointed out, I think it's, if it's a partnership, you don't set something in stone, you have a conversation. So I think it was good feedback, and so we're, but at the same time, you want to make it clear that that's the will of council.
Thank you. Given that, that understanding, is I can support the, I can support the, the motion than as it stands now. But I do believe that Counselor Bazanz makes a very good point, and that is, you know, the hours of service relative to, are we prepared to extend the hours of service to the same length? And then secondly, is after we receive the call, we're going to need to engage the contractor in any event, so we are adding an extra layer. So those are considerations that, that should be part of the discussion, but, but as the motion stands right now, I, I can support that, but there's some considerations, I think, that we need to develop further to get a higher level of comfort with that. But I do agree that we, we've got a first-class customer service area within our municipality, and there are other, other organizations that provide that as well. So, so it's, these are options that should be included in the consideration. Mr. Shelton?
Mr. Mayor, if you want to make that motion clear in terms of, the council has the final say, you could add in that staff will report back to council. So this is after we have our discussions.
Okay. And that, we'll add that, then, in that staff report back to council? Is that the mover and the secondor? Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think we've had the discussion there. So this vote, then, is on the amended motion with respect to item number two, and I believe item number one, that stands, right? So we can deal with item number one, and item number two is amended, correct? And then we'll deal with item number three and four of the, of the agenda recommendations, right? Okay. Presented separately, so, all right, then, so a new motion was tabled, and item number two is amended, and I think there's further discussion to deal with Appendix A. So I'm, I'm just looking at, we'll deal then with item number two. All those in favor of item number two as amended? Okay. That's good. Next item, then, is item number three, and that deals with the bag limits under Appendix A. Is that correct? Okay. Any discussion with respect to that? Is the mover, regional counselor?
Thanks very much. Yeah, so essentially, what I'm suggesting is that we move item number three, but outline in Appendix A excluding items two, three, four, and seven of Appendix A, which are all the ones that relate to bag limits. And essentially, the bag limits, at least in the residential portion, I was talking about moving the, the limit of three garbage bags down to two, obviously in an effort to encourage diversion and move people towards recycling and organics, or further move people towards organics and recycling. I don't, I don't support this direction, oddly enough. I, I do consider myself to be someone, pardon? Who's, who's keenly concerned about the environment and diversion, and diversion itself. Having said that, we were provided some data about diversion rates and garbage bag rates in the various municipalities. When I look at that, the, first of all, and what the report states is that, you know, one of the reasons we can move to a two-bag limit is because essentially we're at, on average, at two bags across the board. Part of my thinking on that is, you know, why would we add the disruption or, to, to the residents of New Market, or the inconvenience to the residents of New Market, because some days maybe they are, and some days they aren't, and then you get into a bag tags, a much greater use of bag tags, when we are essentially at the goal we're trying to achieve? Furthermore, when you look at the data provided, you know, those who are doing less bags, those who are doing clear bags, there's some variations, but the variations are not really, really large. And in fact, most importantly, I wouldn't look at what garbage is being put out by each, each, on average, by each municipality, but what is being put out in recycling and organics, because that's the point, is to drive it to recycling and organics. And those numbers don't fluctuate greatly, and in fact, our recycling numbers and our organics numbers exceed those of Georgina, who has a one-bag limit. So it's not necessarily driving the results you want. Finally, I would point out that, that New Market and York Region in particular is a leader in diversion. Our diversion rate is, is, usually wins us an award most years. And I think this is incredibly significant, and something to be proud of, but frankly, you've got to weigh everything in life, including environmental concerns against cost, and diversion is expensive. It's very expensive. And while I want us to do well, and I want us to succeed in this area, you know, there's, there's a limit to how far you want to push a certain agenda when the costs are very, very high. So it's a matter of balance for myself. But I, I think in the end, the real story for me is when I look at the data, when I look at the fact of where we already are and what we've achieved, it seems to me we're putting in place a measure that, yeah, maybe it will, it will bump our, our outcomes a little bit better, but will it significantly change the landscape? I don't think so. Will it be seen as a, an inconvenience to the taxpayers who pay for garbage pickup? Some, maybe some will appreciate, and some, and I'm sure I will get some emails from some people who are upset with me for not championing this fully. But I think that by and large, the data doesn't support the direction. If the direction meant no inconvenience and no disruption to the current, the residents around the town, then I would say, you know, great. But it, it does involve disruption, and it involves change, and it involves use of bag tags, and having to make sure you've got them on hand, et cetera. And so when I look at the data and what it's doing to recycling organics in other municipalities that have taken some steps, I don't see that, the merit there. You can talk to the people in Georgina. I don't know if it's still the case, but they certainly had problems with garbage being found in locations that they, was undesired, when they put in the restrictions. And, and again, finally, I think this is something we're, we're largely already doing very, very well at, and to create another bureaucratic process, or another process around this, I think, isn't, isn't justified. And so I, again, will not support this direction, as I don't believe it's supported by the data or by the, by the, the end results. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Twitty is the secondor, and then Counselor Kerwin?
Yeah, I don't really have too much to add. I think that this, this information is really, that we received is, is very informative. Just, I just want to double-check. So according to the, to this chart here that was sent out by Mr. Calamuto, through you, Mr. Mayor, is it indicating that New Market in 2014 was putting out 1.17 bags of garbage per two, every two weeks? Is that what it's saying? And then it says, then below, there's another number, it says, to, you know, 2.1, 1.87, and then average of 1.99. Is that just the difference between the two years, 2014 and 2015?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The region does audits every once in a while on the material that's set out. So within the two-week period in 2014, the region noted that the average garbage, number of bags of garbage that were put out by New Market residents was 1.17. Subsequent to that, there were two additional audits in 2015, both the spring and the summer. And through that, it was noted that in the spring, residents of New Market put out, on average, 2.1 bags of garbage every two weeks, and in the summer, 1.87. Again, the 2014 data were just for single-family residential homes.
So, sorry, so three, Mr. Mayor, so the 2015 results, that's including all, is it including commercial as well? It's including everything? Is that what that's including?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it's including all residents.
All residents, okay.
And what we're referencing is this, this broad spreadsheet, this spreadsheet here?
Yeah.
Yeah. So where does the number 1.17 show up under?
The top.
Under New Market?
The top chart.
2014.
2000, I have under G 1.2. Do I have a different chart?
Under New Market?
Yeah, New Market. G for 2014, I have 1.2.
I have 1.17.
Yeah.
I must have had an earlier version. Okay. In any event. Counselor Kerwin?
Just a question through you, Mr. Mayor, to our, our director. How do group homes fit into this? Like, I have a fair number, we have a fair number of group homes throughout New Market, not just, every ward has them. And I have group shelters, but how do they, how are they calculated?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The group homes are, are collected by the cart system most of the time.
By which?
By the cart system. It's the, the larger bins.
Yes.
That's a border communal bins, similar to a high residential entity. So that's how they would be collected, some, very similar to a high residential, so similar to a low-rise or a high-rise, that's how they are collected, under the bins. So their, their per-unit, their per-unit output is not included in these numbers?
So they're not included in these statistics?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? My, my own view is that I, that I support a two-bag, two-bag limit, and maybe that's because of my experience in ward, in Counselor Hampton's ward. When I drive around on garbage day, I see one bag, not, not very often, much more than two bags. And so I think if we're already achieving it, it might be good to set that as a standard. And, and it might well be that this is a mature neighborhood, and younger families probably have, have a different, a different need as far as waste management goes. But I think in fairness, and a little more balance with respect to the overall population, a two-bag limit, I think, is achievable in most cases, and, and it sets a standard of expectation. So I, I would support a two-bag limit, so I won't be supporting this motion. Counselor Hampton?
Thank you. I will be supporting the motion. I think we as a council, or we as a town, I mean, our residents are doing a good job by putting out only 1.17 bags every couple of weeks on average. I think that's good news for New Market and good news for our environment. I think there are instances where people are, are busier and maybe produce a little more garbage, whether that be around holiday time or, or whenever. And I just don't want to see people having to keep garbage in their garage or inside their home when they've maybe exceeded that, that two-bag limit. And I don't want to see us charging the people at that time of year, whether it's once or twice a year, charging them an additional $2 for that third bag when we're at that 1.17. So I will be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Counselor Bazanz?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, I'll also be supporting the motion. I think that, that, you know, the data does show that we are doing well with respect to diversion, and, and I think that we'd want to sort of avoid a situation that is already sort of happening now, where people are shopping their garbage around to their neighbors who aren't putting out more than two bags, when they have those, those instances where, where perhaps as a result of a family event, or, or some other occasion, that they may have a little bit more garbage that week. The other thing that, that I've often heard from those residents who, for whatever reason, have had their garbage not picked up, and then have to put it into, into their garages for the next pickup, is, you know, if we then also add on the additional need to pay for a tag because they now got stuck with more garbage the next time they put it out, I think that that will just get people more angry. So if the, the data is showing that we're, as a town, as a community, doing well towards diversion, I think that we should just respect that and recognize that, and, and not at this point be adding on another fee.
Thank you. Mr. Shelton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did want to just maybe make the same point as I did with the other item, and that is to get council's preference and take it back to the table. The, there is the whole business of, you know, trying to be better environmental stewards, but what we are trying to accomplish at the, at the CIO's table and at the director's table is harmonization from an efficiency point of view that might reflect into the contract prices. And we tried this the last time around, and there wasn't an appetite to go to two bags. We now have quite a solid waste total program for the residents, and I think the, the term "bag" is maybe misused. It's containers up to 50 pounds, where you can put in, you know, a couple of bags in a container. So again, council can make the decision now, and that'll be the position that we take back to the group, or to express your concern and see where the group is going. But it wasn't just on the, the diversion that was part of our considerations here, and I just wanted to be sure that council members were aware of that.
Thank you. Counselor Kerwin?
Just a point again through you, Mr. Mayor, to our director, Mr. Calamuto. Over a year period, how much we, would we collect from these $2 tags that people need to buy? I'm sure we have that figure. I know.
I know.
I know that. How much do we collect?
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Right.
And we collect approximately $35,000 is, is what we have budgeted per year. It is estimated that if the garbage limit is set at two, and as, as the recommendations say that the bag tag fees lowered to $2, it is expected that to increase by approximately $20,000.
So, that, in effort, in effort, in, in some, we would collect roughly $55,000?
That's our estimation.
If it's, and, and I think that has to be clear, that this recommendation reduces the fee from $2.40 to $2, which is included in this report. But in the given year of 2014, we collected $35,000. And if this goes in, there's a possibility of, of we would collect $55,000 in 2000, when, after August. Or maybe $10,000 would be, be increased. Good, thank you.
Thank you. My final observation is that the, this issue has been before the New Market Environmental Advisory Committee in the past, and their recommendation has been to support a two-bag limit as well. Regional counselor, final comments?
Yeah, sorry. First of all, thank you to Counselor Kerwin for pointing out that this, this involves a reduction from $2.40 to $2 for bag tags?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so we should adjust that to $2.40 to keep the same revenue level. We're changing nothing else. There's no need to change that. So, I don't know, do you want me to do that as a separate one, or if that can be bundled, these two together?
I'm just wondering again, Mr. Shelton, is that a N6 price model? Well, it's not an N6 price model, okay.
And, yeah, I have a couple of other comments. I, I appreciate Mr. Shelton's comments about the approach to take on this, on this one. No, I don't like the other one. I guess, the only thing I'd point out is, I'm having a little fun here, but if, if we don't want to be set in stone, because we've got to work with the N6, I suspect the effect of number three, if it wasn't amended, was we were set in stone. So, either they were all magically going to be okay with that, or we weren't taking the flexible approach previously. So, because it was, it was even, the bylaw was, you know, being drafted accordingly. So, I, I'm, this is one I'd rather be fairly clear on. I, I'm going to be amazed, as, as admirable as it is, I'll be amazed if we can get N6 congruity on this. And while it would be advantageous, we didn't have it in the last contract, I guess, you know, I have no problem with staff bringing this back for our attention if, if, you know, if five of the six are somewhere different, and it, and it, you know, we can, we can look at, have a second look at it then. But I, I'd like to leave the, the recommendation as, as proposed.
And that's, and that's adopting Appendix A with the exception of items 2, 3, 4, and 7.
Right, and, and recommendation for it to be adjusted to $2.
$2. We haven't voted on that one yet, I, I don't think. Okay. All right, let's deal with item number three then. We've, Counselor Hampton, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question through you, Mr. Mayor, to our CAO. Has there ever been any kind of consideration to go with RFP for maybe two different scenarios, where you have the two-container limit or two-bag limit, three-bag limit, and then go back to all respective council, councils, N6, and say, here's what it costs, here's where a cost is for the two-bag limit, here's what it is for the three-bag limit, and then we can make a decision. And if people are producing more garbage, then we can look at charging for that third bag. Has that ever been considered?
Mr. Shelton?
Or has everyone brought forward to council?
Mr. Mayor, we do have a consultant working with the director, so perhaps the director could speak to that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kalamoto?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We could put that in the RFP. From the consultant's experience and from what we've heard from our current contractor, the different bag limits through the different municipalities does sometimes cause confusion for their drivers. So, if it was standardized, it would be easier for them to understand. And, and then potentially there would be a cost savings there, because it is easier to administer as a contract. However, we can absolutely put those options into the RFP to see how much difference that actually does entail.
I, I think it would be really helpful for, you know, if we went to the, if all the different municipalities looked at those numbers, and we had those hard numbers, and, and, you know, then it would be an easier decision for all of us to make. And we are trying to be as environmentally responsible as possible. And then I think it also strikes a balance of, you know, you're producing more garbage, you pay extra. And I think it would be an interesting opportunity to look at that and get some buy-in from all N6 members. Thank you.
Mr. Shelton, to advance that thought, can that go forward as a direction? Or does it, does it create some additional work in terms of the development of the RFP to the extent that you want that to be a motion?
I'd, I'd ask the clerk to comment on that. I think with the motion on the table, plus that direction, they'd be in conflict. But I'd ask the clerk to clarify that.
You'd be a contrary motion? Yeah, that's true. Trying to put an amendment forward?
Yeah. I would like to put an amendment forward, that staff be authorized to speak with the N6 on the potential of having a, a standard bag limit for all municipalities, and that the RFP go out to potential contractors requesting a, an estimate or a, a quotation for two different scenarios, two bags and three bags, and then come back to council.
So, this one, I wish I'd brought my protocol, but is that a contrary motion? Should we let the other motion either pass or fail? Mr. Clerk?
My interpretation initially would be that that would be supplemental, but it's supple, so supplemental that creates conflict with the first motion. So, I may not have, I may not have helped you with that.
No, that's fine. That's, that's fine.
Yeah.
If they want, yeah.
Yeah. So, I would, it's got the potential of being contrary. And so, like I say, I was hoping to get the idea in, but I don't want to have a contrary motion. That's not the intent. Unless the mover and the secondor would consider that as supplemental, or do you consider that to be complimentary? I'll just ask you for your advice. I can rule that it is contrary.
I'd have to, if you indulge me, I, I don't want to just say no and not speak to it a bit. But I, I guess for myself, I, I, I do see this contradictory or contrary. But partially because of where I'm coming from on this, and it's, there's a few things. I mean, as Counselor Hampton pointed out earlier, people will put out one bag, one bag, one bag. They don't get a, they don't get a tag back for doing that. But then they put out three, and they've got to have a tag. It's, it's a form of a tax, right? And there might be a tiny cost savings, because the drivers will know one jurisdiction or another. But I guess we could go to tender and, and find out. But I think the other thing we have to remember is that this, this, if it, if it's meaning, if it's not meaningful, it's probably not worth doing. If it is meaningful, it's going to drive organics and recycling, which will add much more cost than a save through drivers knowing which route's which. I mean, organics and, I, I wish I had the figures for you here, but they're significantly higher. I want to say $80 a ton for land waste, and 160, 180 type of thing for organics and recycling. And it's great to try to achieve that. But, you know, we are already a leader. So, I, I actually, personally, and I, I don't have an expert report in front of me, but my experience from other, other reports and other committees is that this would actually increase costs. And so, both because I don't think it's, I think it's a type of one-tag-at-a-time tax. And, you know, part of our job is just, we're supposed to provide garbage service. If you put out one, one, and then you don't get money back, but you put out three, and you get charged extra. And so, for that reason, and that I don't believe it's a cost savings, I, I respectfully would decline.
Okay. All right. Counselor Hampton, further comments, and then Counselor Kerwin?
Yeah, I, I, so now I've changed my mind. I will not be supporting the motion. If, with, you know, in my mind, what I'm seeing is, you know, if, if we come back from the contractor and the cost of doing the garbage is one-third less, to me, in my mind, that says that we can reduce that portion of our taxes to the average resident. And if you're putting out less garbage, you're paying less. And that's my perspective on it. That may well not be the case, and we could have information coming back that there's a savings of less than one-third. But for myself, I'd like to see that information.
Counselor Kerwin?
Just, just another question before I, I vote on this. With registered ADUs, accessory dwelling units, does that property pay more taxes because they have a registered ADU than a normal house that does not have an ADU, that stickly stands alone, that has one family in that family?
I'll, I'll turn that to her commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, I'd, I see Mike is here, so I'll, if I'm giving any misinformation, maybe Mike can, can come up and give a reply. But it's my understanding that it has to be reflected in the assessed value. And if it's not in the assessed value, then it's not paying any more taxes. Our, as you know, we do have a registry of ADUs.
Yes.
So, if, if the assessed value was increased in those, then they would pay, of course, more taxes.
More, more property taxes, the assessment. The, the other question that's, that's occurring within New Market are basically boarding houses or tenement houses, where there are six individuals living in that house, and it's carved up with inside, and they aren't registered. Yet, those six people, or seven people, would generate a fair amount more garbage than a standalone house with a normal family. Are they taxed extra?
Madam Commissioner, Commissioner Morgan.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have the answer to that question, but certainly we can, we can look into it and provide that information to you.
Yeah. Is Grace, can, Grace will do that?
Yeah.
All right.
Yep, push the button, please.
Yes, it is great.
There we go.
Thank you. Sorry. Through you, Mr. Mayor. The answer to that question is, if they're assessed that way, so, registered or not, if MPAK has stumbled on them or done a scheduled inspection, and they've been picked up on the roll in the multi-residential MT class, which by definition is six or more self-contained units.
Right.
Then their value will be reflective of that, and, and that's a higher tax class, if you will. So, yes, if they're not picked up and they're viewed to be a single-family res, then that's the way they're going to be taxed. So, it depends individually on each property, but they can be identified and assessed appropriately.
Great. Thank you, Grace. That's, that's very valuable information. I thank you on that.
Thank you. Mr. Kalamoto?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. For further information for the counselor with respect to the process of how it's collected, there, once it is identified, there is actually a sign that goes on the window, and the driver would not collect more than the stated bags unless there is a sign in the window, and then they would be collected double.
And so, what I mean, instead of two register an ADU, is, is that they're allowed to put out more garbage, because they are a registered ADU, they're licensed, and they picked up their sticker?
Through you, Ms. Mayor. Through you, Ms. Mayor. That is, that is, that is correct.
That's excellent.
And so, then, when there is a sticker, that is the only time when they are collected for the additional unit.
That is great. Thank you.
I could stand corrected, but some time ago, we had that discussion about whether ADUs paid more in taxes. And the last thing I recall was that having an ADU or a finished basement, the difference wasn't, wasn't significant enough as far as, as far as the assessment goes. So, one could have a fully finished basement, and the assessment may go up as a result of that, and it would be no different with an ADU. So, so I, I'm not sure that having an ADU is actually captured in the assessment, but I could stand corrected on that. Regional counselor?
Thanks very much. I'm just trying to give more thought to Counselor Hampton's suggestion. And I guess, I, I guess, I'm just trying to think it through, because the idea being then that the tender would go out for non-conformity amongst the N6 and the cost if everybody adopted the two bags? Is that, is that, is that the intention? Okay. I, I don't, I'll, I'll go as far as saying I don't see that as contradictory, because we do have N6 partners that will be pursuing their own directions here, and some are at a two-bag limit. So, I mean, if, if we want to see what that looks like, I don't see any harm in it. Although, I have to say that the chances that all the municipalities come to this position seems fairly slim to me. But if, if, I still think I, we should put forward our position, but then, but then allow for the tender to go forward, and if there's something worth considering, then I guess we can, we can reconsider. So, I, I'm, I'm okay, I'm okay with, I think if you maybe make it a separate recommendation, but I don't think it's necessarily contradictory.
Okay.
Because of, because it's, it's six municipalities tendering at once, and many of them have different standards already, as we can see on, on page six. So, I'm, I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine with that. And the one thing I would like to ask, though, is if, you know, if, if it gets to, and I guess it's not that we're requiring this, because we, again, we can't. It's, the N6 has to be online to even do this, I guess, to, to tender this way. So, I guess that the recommendation would have to be something that staff explore this approach with the N6.
Okay. That might be better to deal with separately.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. So, I'm, I'm fine with that. And if, if it does come back, if, if, first of all, it gets to the point where it actually goes out that way, and it comes back, the only thing I'd ask is that staff, when, if there is a, a cost savings to be realized, that staff also bring back an analysis of other cost implications vis-à-vis organics and recycling, et cetera, and we look at that as a, as a collective.
Okay. Good. Now, I have Counselor Bazanz and Counselor Kerwin.
So, for clarification, then, given that harmonization seems to be such an important, an important way to, to help to drive costs down and gain efficiencies, are we, as a council, then, asking as well for the RFP to include a comparison between if, what would it look like if all N6 were harmonized in all of these areas, versus what would your quote come back like, given that we've got these, these differences? I mean, rather than staying at the difference of two or three bags as a comparator, could we ask sort of, you know, ideal state, everybody's harmonized, what would it cost us versus, given that there are some differences, what, what would you propose the cost to be? Because I think that that would be, that would certainly be more fulsome in terms of the kinds of information to make some decisions. It may also be a little bit more compelling to some of the other municipalities to recognize why there is, there could be an advantage to them to work towards harmonization.
Okay. Mr. Kalamoto?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things. With respect to, I guess, any RFP that goes out, the more that there is uncertainty and higher risk, there is a tendency for contractors to be risk adverse. So, when they do not have a solidified agreement to some things, sometimes the cost is higher. In, in saying that, if we were to move ahead and go with a couple of different options, absolutely, they would be able to quote that. The other thing is, is that as, as the regional council, regional counselor mentioned, we are one of six municipalities. So, I can absolutely take back everything that this council is, is noting to the rest of the N6 group, and they would have to go back to their, and we'd have to, have to also listen to their councils to see what, the options they want to put on the table. So, yes, absolutely, we, we can do all of those things and bring those back to the table.
Okay. Counselor Kerwin?
You know, Mr. Mayor, in, in all of this, we've, you know, we're negotiating a contract for the six northern municipalities. And truly, harmonization is crucial, because we're dealing with one company, Green for Life. And it's very hard for drivers to know what they should do, because if you take a look, Aurora allows three, East Wilinbury two, Georgina one, King two, New Market three, Wichita Stovall three. In the negotiations, that harmonization is crucial, that, because drivers on these trucks, it's a, it's a really demanding job. I don't envy anyone who's on a, a Green for Life truck, particularly Friday, when they were picking up yard waste, and it was pouring rain, and there were lots of bags out there, but they went the extra mile, and they performed a yeoman's service. So, drivers change. How long does a driver stay on a truck, but then he has How long does a driver stay on a truck, but then he has to learn all the different rules? So, you know, I think it's imperative almost that when you negotiate, that almost throughout the northern six municipalities, that we be harmonized. So it assists a company that picks up blue boxes and so forth, that it becomes more efficient, then you don't need the calls all the time, because, you know, these drivers are doing their best, but sometimes they go into East Glinbury, and what a boundary we have. I mean, how does a driver know we're 80 rods south of the green lane? I mean, who, what level of government ever created that boundary? The same way in Aurora. So to me, I mean, it's, it's like a nightmare. Where do I know where 80 rods is? Most people don't even know what a rod is. So we've got a boundary that goes 80 rods north of St. John's, and 80 rods south of East Glinbury, and 80 rods north of Newmarket. So to me, we, we have to get the northern six on board and get it harmonized, and I think that's really important. And, and before I even make a decision, I might make a decision here for three, but East Glinbury's got one, or, or East Glinbury has two, in fact. So we have three, they have two. How do I know as a driver where the boundary is even?
Thank you. The good news is, is that with respect to the 80 rods and the boundaries, that was a previous government. We don't need to be responsible for that. But I'll have Counselor, Counselor Hempton.
If you could come back and say that's why we moved it, I think it'd be great.
Okay. Thank you. Now, Counselor Twitty, I need to ask you if the, the other motion that's being contemplated, if, if you would agree that that would...
It's an additional motion, right?
Yep.
It's additional confirmation, yeah.
Okay. So you're, you wouldn't be concerned about being contra... Okay. So the motion that we're dealing with now is, is the one that's shown as, as number three, and it refers to Appendix A, and the motion that's being, that we'll be, that I'm asking a vote for now will be...
Mr. Brower?
Sure, in that, the same language, in that Appendix A of Stop Report 2015-58 has amended to omit bag limit references in items two, three, four, and seven.
Okay. Great. I'll call the question on that. All those in favor of the motion? One, two, three, six, opposed? Did I miss somebody? Okay. That motion carries. Now, this might be a good time now to, to entertain that second motion, and that is something with respect to exploring the options, that staff explore the options.
Yeah, and that staff explore a standard bag limit, two bags and three bags with the N6 group to be brought back to council.
Sure, and what potential cost savings would be, right? That's very important.
To identify potential cost savings.
Or, yeah, comparables between bag limits, between two and three, if you have some...
Mr. Sheldon.
I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if I could explore that as a provision in the RFP.
Yeah.
We need to explore whether that's doable to put in the RFP. So it would be whatever everyone has as a bag limit, that's priced versus going to a harmonized number two.
That's right, in the RFP, that's the intent, Counselor?
Yes. I think that's what I heard.
I would second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Exactly.
Any opposed? Let's carry. Good. Now, I think what's remaining on this item is still item number IV, is that correct? And number one, have we dealt with number one else?
One, five, and four.
One, five, and four?
One, four, and five.
Yeah, one, four, and five. So item number four, I believe, was, was amended to read $2.40.
Yes.
Okay. And that's all part of the motion? Is that the way the record is?
Sure.
Okay. Say, one, four, and five, then, with item number four amended to read four dollar, uh, $2.40. Any further discussion on that component? Counsel Vay?
Perhaps we should defer that because of Counselor Hempton's motion. We don't know what information's coming back from going two bags, three bags, and if we were going with a two-bag limit, I believe that's where the recommendation for tag fee of $2 came in, if we stayed at three, three bags, the, I'm assuming it would stay at $2.40.
Okay.
So perhaps we want to defer that until we get the, the other information, because that'll kind of direct where we land on it.
Okay. It's a good point, because they are already at 240, so do we...
Yeah.
So that's already in effect, so we could actually take that away. Right?
Yeah. So that's all.
Well, that's, that's, my point is just...
Go ahead.
As is, and, and this is for 2016, right? And the contract's still over a year away.
All right.
So the effect of making it 240 is to leave it as is until...
Okay, so you're not looking at taking it down there?
No, no, John, I picked that up and John caught it.
It's 240, so 240 is currently what it's, so we're...
240.
Is that, is that correct with Stafford? Just be sure.
Mr. Sheldon, is that correct? We are at 240, but the intent here is to have it at 240 for 2016 as the contract...
Yes, that is correct, so I think what I'm hearing is that you just don't want to change that.
That's correct.
Do it the way it is.
We have over a year, if something did happen to work out with the N6, so...
Yep, so you could just, you know, not do anything with that one.
Yeah.
Just leave it the way it is.
So that would mean taking, that would mean taking, taking item number four out.
Either way, whatever.
So what is the wish of the mover in the second?
It's fine the way it is, it's more...
Okay. Okay. Any further discussions on the remaining items? All those in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. Thank you. I think it's a good time for us to take a break now, it's about 3:30, maybe we can come back at 3:45? So we'll, yeah, we'll recess until 3:45.
Okay, I'll call a meeting back to order. Next item is... I'll defer item number four until after we've had our closed session. And so the next item then is item number five, which is the public art policy. We have our recommendations. So the motions to deal with the recommendations. Regional councillor?
Thanks very much. I'd like to suggest two changes to the recommendations in front of us. The one is, I actually would like to see an increased amount of community representation. I think the arts community is well represented and brings an important perspective and we have town staff represented. But I think to have just average residents, not art experts and not staff expertise, but just average residents view on, does this seem appropriate or not, is very important. One way would be to lower the representation of the staff and the arts community to two and two and then make the community reps, you know, three. But I think maybe the easiest way is to keep that the way it is and just increase the community representatives to three, meaning not non-art's community reps. And so you would have six community reps, three arts, three just general community representations and three from staff, which is an uneven number, nine, which we'd be needing to seek. So however we go about it, but I just think we need... Three, three and three. Yeah, and the goal is really just to have a greater representation of just a general residence perspective. The... The other change I'd like to suggest is that, I was trying to think of past experiences and how to ensure that council is not adjudicating one art piece at a time, but at the same time has some sort of check and balance in the process so that it, the outcome is something similar to what one would conceive a council to want to support. And the best way I could think of that was that, I thought about maybe coming to council at the end, but you know, you don't want to veto a resident's votes and a committee of people and you don't, you know, with two pieces there. But maybe the best way is to have this process begin with the report from staff on the process and the criteria come to council and so that we can, council can look at the criteria for that particular installation. And these are often large, significant purchases and will have prominence in our community and, you know, sometimes thirty, forty, fifty, hundred thousand dollars and places a prominence in the community. And to have at least a point where we could weigh in and say, you know, we'd like to, you know, the criteria looks good, or could we add to that criteria that it uses natural materials or that it reflects a theme of historical significance or something so that we feel it gets the kind of fit we're looking for without making the final decision. So I'd like to suggest that, that I'd a recommendation that the process begins with a report to council, outlining the process and criteria and timeline, et cetera. And then the other amendment was just to change the community representatives to three. Thank you.
Is there a second for that as amended? Councillor Vey? Okay. Speaking to the motion?
Very quickly, and I'd like to emphasize, it's terrific the way the expertise of the staff involved and the expertise and the perspective of the arts community. But in the end, this is public art and it is for the residents. So I really like the idea of strengthening that representation on our, on our final committee, be able to get that perspective too.
Okay. I'd like to add that we should give some consideration. I don't necessarily want it to be an additional item, but there should be a direction to staff to ensure that there's an appropriate minimum number of votes when we come to a community vote. I hate to see two votes or three votes and it be a two-one split type of thing. So I just want to add as a direction to staff that an appropriate minimum number of votes would be required for the, under item number four of those recommendations. Any further discussions on the recommendations as amended? No further discussion, all those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried, thank you. Item number six is the community guard. Recommendations are before you. Could I have motion with respect to those recommendations? Councillor Hampin? Is there a second? Regional councillor? Okay, discussion, councillor Hampin?
Yes, I'd like to thank staff for providing this report and bringing this information to us. I'm happy to see that the projected operational costs on the municipal side is six hundred dollars per year and the capital cost of six thousand dollars. And it seems very reasonable to be creating a space where the public can grow their own produce and it's a good initiative and it's good for Ward Four and our town. One comment I did want to make is that recently at our streetscape information center here in this council chambers last week, we had the presenter talking about creating community gardens along urban and along the corridor. And he said that some of his concerns were that sometimes these community gardens can look unkept and not look great in the community. So I was just wondering what staff or what thoughts were given to creating some type of, maybe nice fencing on the streetscape or some kind of signage and just to make it look like an attractive place for the community and providing this much-needed garden.
Mr. Gellhammer?
Thank you, councillor Hampin, through you, Mr. Mayor. These are all things that we could take into account when designing this potential community garden site. As you know, the report does say we will have to work collaboratively with York Region and York Region Food Network on further aspects of this site to make sure that there's agreement. But with respect to keeping it in an orderly shape and well-kept around the perimeter, those are things that, you know, go into some of those costs that were identified in terms of the staff time and the capital cost. But we can further elaborate on some of those costs as well. I don't know, Mr. Kalamutu, if you had anything further to add with respect to costs or the, or the perimeter cleanliness of the community gardens?
Mr. Kalamutu?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Fencing and those other things were not contemplated in this capital project. It was mostly for the water. And six hundred dollars is to provide the same level of service that we currently do for the other existing community gardens. We do some tilling work over there, we do some basically mixing up of the soil, we supply some soils and some wood chips, et cetera, et cetera. So those are similar costs to what we do and similar level of service that we do to the existing community garden.
Thank you. I was wondering if I could maybe be included in some of those meetings and discussions with the food network as it is in Ward Four. And I would be more than willing to, I would like to send out an information piece to the ward and the surrounding area encouraging to use these plots and what opportunities there are. And also potentially doing some private funding if we, if we need that for some fencing and making it look really attractive and it wouldn't have to come from the public sector. But I think we could really raise some money to do that. So if I could, I'd like to be involved in that.
Thank you. Regional councillor is the second?
Yeah, I just, I'm glad to see this coming forward. I mean, I know it's still, you know, examining or exploring the process, but I think it's, New York Region Food Network has been encouraging us for some time to move forward in this area. And I think it's a very low-cost way to bring community benefit as, as we intensify in the corridor around that area even in particular. It's a great amenity to offer to people. So it's really great to see. My one suggestion, I think the idea of fundraising is a great idea. The other possible suggestion is to use either an existing budget for tree planting or enhance the budget a bit. But I think if we did a row of coniferous trees there, because, you know, not only would it make it more attractive, but, you know, gardeners are, I don't think, you know, Main Street can be busy, Arteri, and I think their experience would be enhanced by having a bit of a buffer there both visually and for sound. And so I think it might be a very low-cost way to create that kind of separation. But just great to see, thanks.
Thank you. My observations would be that that's very close to a forest as well. So I think there would be some benefit to having a fence because there may be some animals come in and nibbling your, nibbling your garden. So that's a, it's a consideration, but all in, I think it's a good idea. Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried, thank you. Next item is item number seven, and that relates to the artificial turf field. There are recommendations before you. Is there anyone who wishes to propose a motion with respect to the recommendations?
I'll move it together on the table.
Okay. Okay, councillor Hampin? As the mover?
Thank you, and I again appreciate the report. It's some great information and it's a facility that this town actually does need. It's a project that's coming into, or could potentially come into Ward Four and could benefit the community. I know that there'll be evening activity and lighting and things like that and the people in the surrounding area may have some concerns in regards to that. So if this does go through, hopefully we can consult with the residents in the surrounding area and give them as much information as possible. One concern I did have was on the operational costs of sixty thousand dollars to operate this facility. They'll be shared by the school board as well as with the municipal use. And we'll be getting a revenue of approximately ten thousand dollars. So our overall cost is going to be fifty thousand dollars to operate this facility. I was wondering, through you, Mr. Mayor, if we could hear from staff if there's some way of us looking at reducing those costs on an annual basis?
Mr. Service? Mr. Kalamutu?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We've taken a look at similar, similar turf fields within the N6 and actually reached out all the way up to Berry and all the way down to Richmond Hill. And these are the comparable costs that they have been using for their own staff to go out and maintain those fields. So they're on par, similar to what other municipalities have using. There is also an option of contracting that out. And again, with, if it was internal staff, there would be capital costs for equipment that would also need to be added. However, if you're contracting out those costs, then you wouldn't have those capital costs. It would just be operational.
Thank you. You know, part of the reason that I, I like this project is that the school board is contributing half of the money basically on the capital side to create this space and putting it on the space where the, where the school board owns the property behind Dennison School. Has there any discussion been on the operational side? Because the school is going to be using it during school hours of them sharing any of the operational costs?
Mr. Service?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we have had some discussion with them. We did want to recognize that there is value to the land, that they are contributing as part of this project. And so we also recognize that all revenue collected, though it doesn't cover the cost by any stretch, would be coming directly to the town. If we got into a situation where we were splitting on costs, we also have to then start looking on splitting on revenues. And then that, that starts to get into situations of our pricing models and how we go ahead and price. And it would have to be both parties agreeing to those pricing situations. So we felt that, given their contribution of land, that that was an appropriate offset that we take on the ongoing maintenance.
Thank you. Councillor Kerwin is the second?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to say that over the decades, we've had an excellent working relationship with the York Region District School Board. Everything we've been involved in has been a win-win situation for both the board and for the town. But with artificial turf, this is a win-win situation for the sporting community and the community at large to use this, this field. I mean, it can be used for any sport, whether it's soccer, whether it's rugby, whether it's cricket. It's just, it's just an added wonderful facility to replace some of the low-par pitches or whatever we have in some of the areas throughout town. It's, many other communities have this. It's the way to go and the maintenance is less than, than grass.
Thank you. Councillor Twain?
Yeah, thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions to staff. Do other municipalities, when they're charging usage for turf fields, do they charge more for using a turf field than a regular field? Is there a difference in cost for that use?
Mr. Service?
It's a good question. Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. It ranges dramatically. So there are some municipalities that are charging significantly more and there are other municipalities that are charging comparable to a natural turf field. So the price, the dollar figure that was put in there was under the assumption that we would remain in the same ballpark of pricing that we're at currently with our premier fields, recognizing that we're coming back to you in 2016 doing a comprehensive review of all of our field fees and all of our fees in general, I should say. So we want, we will be back before you in another couple of months where we will actually explore classifications of fields and how we should price those according to what other municipalities are doing and what the market can bear.
Okay, so just follow up, through you, Mr. Mayor. So, yeah, I would, you know, I mean, I guess that's my only hesitation though. It seems like, you know, quite a bit of outlay of costs with not a significant amount of, you know, funding coming back to the community where it's costing us quite a bit to have it. I guess that's where my apprehension is, even though I'm a huge supporter of having a turf field. So perhaps, sorry.
If I may, through you, Mr. Mayor. Just to note that those ongoing operating costs of around fifty to sixty thousand and with around ten thousand dollars in revenue, that would be typical of any field, whether it's natural turf or artificial turf. So it's really just the additional cost of adding another asset to our inventory and there isn't a significant difference between it being artificial versus natural.
Okay, that's helpful to know. And to follow up with that, through you, Mr. Mayor. The only, so am I understanding that, okay, so the term of agreement is for ten years, but the option to extend the agreement should the quality of field permit a longer life? So... So are we saying that a turf field generally only lasts 10 years? So basically, this cost of, this outlay of cost of $1 million and the operational cost of approximately $50,000 a year will only be for 10 years? And then after that, we would have, it would have to be redone again at the cost of redoing a turf field? Or is it at a lower cost because you've basically got the infrastructure there? Or, you know, I mean, my only concern now, again, is about, okay, so in 10 years, we really don't have an agreement anymore with the school board, and we spent all this money?
Okay. Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. There's a couple of points that I want to note in answering that question. The first is that the total cost, capital cost, that's been identified includes things like lights. It includes a building that will house change rooms and maintenance equipment. It includes fencing and all of those other amenities, which would have a life beyond the 10 years. So the only, the 10-year life is strictly the surface of the field itself, which, having in other municipalities, I've been responsible for replacement of that surface, and it's around $200,000 at that point in time to $250,000 to replace the surface. We've identified 10 years, but we've also identified within the agreement that we would begin a thorough analysis of the quality of the field at year eight and a negotiation process on whether or not we wanted to extend the agreement at that point in time. 10 years was identified because the science is still changing on artificial turf fields, and we just don't know right now. There isn't enough sample size to know. It could last 15 years. We don't know until we've kind of gone through it.
So, through you, Mr. Mayor, so in 10 years, though, are we, could the school board turn around and say that, you know, even though we've spent all this money on infrastructure, like a building and lights and fencing and all of this, that the school board now could turn around and we would not have the ability to use that field or to contract it out anymore, and we put all that money in? So, I mean, are we, is there something in the agreement that is going to extend beyond that 10-year period?
It's within the confines of the legal boundaries that the school board has. They can't commit beyond 10 years if the school were to close, for example. But then a whole other set of legislation would apply where we would have, we would be up on the list on right of refusal and those kinds of things. So what we've identified within the course of the agreement is that we want to ensure that this is a longstanding partnership and that we'll continue that partnership. And unless something unforeseen were to happen, like a foreclosure of a school or something like that, that we would work to continue the agreement.
So that would be laid out in the contract somewhere?
Yeah, it would be outlined within the contract, that our efforts will be to maintain the field, but that we do have to have the ability to get out of it. So the alternative, the school board has to operate in that manner, given their legislative requirements. If the alternative would be to not partner with them and incur the entire capital cost on our own land.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bezanz.
And through you, Mr. Mayor, I just have a couple of questions with respect to your revenue projections. You noted that the $60,000 would be offset by $10,000 in revenue. Is that, would that revenue be incremental because this is now an additional playing field? Or are we now going to be taking away from existing playing fields because nobody wants to play on the older soggy fields? So is this, can you explain how the revenue works?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We do expect that this will be incremental increase for a couple of reasons. One is that it increases the shoulder season, so play in March, April, before we can open natural turf fields, and October, November. So it's in those months that we're able to gain revenue as a result of this. And the other thing that happens often in the summer is that we lose revenue because we have rain dates that we just simply can't make up, where we don't have enough days left for people to make up that time. With an artificial turf field, that allows play during rain anyway, and so we wouldn't lose those as well. So between those three, sort of, beginning season, end season, and then the loss of rain dates, we expect that to be an increase.
Okay. And one more question. So in light of this being an additional field, though, do you feel that there's still the demand that would keep the other field? So we're not going to be pulling away any revenue from the existing locations in order to support this?
We don't anticipate that. We feel there's enough demand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Regional councillor.
Thanks. I like, I think like some of the others, I got a bit of sticker shock there with the operational costs. I wasn't expecting that. Maybe I guess because I figured the grass wasn't growing, that we'd maybe save some money, but it doesn't appear to be the case. I have to say, though, I'm not overwhelmed by the argument about the land ownership aspect and offsetting operational costs and that we're absorbing all the operational costs. I mean, I see where it's coming from, but, you know, there's benefits to being, and I assume they technically own the facility. So this is their asset. It's in a location that they got to choose. We actually had some discussions, but it was up to the school board. And frankly, their users just have to walk out the door, and it's right there. And so I'm really, I'm not fully comfortable with assuming all of the operational costs and not to mention, you know, some of these school uses can be pretty hard from a maintenance and operational perspective. So I'd like to, I think we should amend this and approve $35,000, $25,000 plus the $10,000 in revenue. And we request that the school board contributes $25,000 to the operational upkeep. And that's, this is a 10-year contract. It's, you know, adds up over time. And I think it's fair to share in the cost. So I would certainly like to hear from staff on that, but I'd like to make that amendment because I think there's a very good reason for it. They're using it half the time, they're paying for half of it, and they're getting the convenience of choosing the location, having it in a convenient use. And it's a good partnership, but I think a good partnership also recognizes that we share in the operation cost.
Mr. Service?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly understand the sentiment of that. There are other intangible factors. One is that they would not be, they would not be willing to assume any operational costs without any portion of the revenue. So they would want a portion of revenue collected. The other thing to note is that all parking lot maintenance and anything associated with the parking lot, which our users would then be using, is still their expense. So we're not, they're not incurring any, we're not incurring any cost related to those things, which, going back to them and suggesting that operating, they contribute to operating costs, will open that door as well, which is fair. It's a door to, it's something to be aware of. And, yeah, so, I mean, we can certainly go back and bring that up with them.
Mr. McDougal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to build on that, we can certainly, the school board's been in the business of getting into partnerships with municipalities on artificial turf fields around York Region for a while. So we can certainly, we're in council's hands, and we can go back with anything in terms of going back and entering into discussions. They certainly, based on their experience and the presence that they've had in the past, you know, they can then, you know, have their position, and we can certainly have ours. So any direction that council has, we can have that conversation happily with them. And we can certainly report back to council. And the school board, you know, again, will bring their history, their experience, and ultimately their position in terms of it. So we could certainly have any discussions with the school board and report back to council further. As well, just to the councillor Twitty's point earlier, around protecting the financial and programming interests of the municipality long-term, there is certainly, as the director outlined, some limitations for the school board in terms of longer-term commitment. But we would, as a municipality, do everything we can to protect our interests in the agreement. And we would have certainly our legal department vetting the agreement with that lens to make sure that we've got the maximum protection for our own interests, our own investment over the long term.
Thank you. Regional councillor.
Are we aware of, through discussions, then? Is this the first of its kind, or they have other partnerships with other municipalities?
Mr. Service?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, they have a number of partnerships already. I can speak from firsthand experience, having been involved in the development of a previous one in Markham. And it is typical of their other agreements that all maintenance costs are covered by the municipality.
Do we know if that's typical means that's the case always, or is that?
That's the case in all of their existing contracts.
It is. We know that.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, I don't know. It's a tough one. It just seems like it's a lot of money, and the whole thing is very costly. What's your feeling, if we were to direct it, let's say, a two-thirds, one-third operational cost and revenue split, do you think it would be a very short conversation? Or?
Mr. Service?
I hope not. But the possibility exists, yes. But I don't think it's an unreasonable position for us to take, so we could certainly go back and approach it from that perspective.
Okay. I think, you know, I suspect if they were to pull their operational costs of maintaining their parking lot, they're significantly less than this. So I'd like to make the amendment that we direct staff to negotiate a two-thirds, one-third operational and revenue split with the school board. Yeah, that's a good point.
I would need a secondor for that amendment.
I just want to add, and councillor Twitty just made a good point, but they also have an existing field that they're currently maintaining at their cost. And, you know, they can say we have revenues, and I'm happy to split it two-thirds, one-third, but they have revenues too. Just because ours are in the form of user fees, revenues are revenues. So hopefully, we can have that conversation.
Is there a secondor for that amendment? Councillor Twitty? Councillor Kirwin?
And failing the negotiations, where are we?
Comes back to council.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that correct? Okay. All right. So, actually, I guess I would just ask first, is that a friendly amendment?
Yep. We'll find out.
Councillor Kirwin, you see that friendly? And Councillor Hamperton, you see that as a friendly amendment?
Don't ask, don't know.
Okay. So I'm taking that as a friendly amendment, so we won't need to deal with the amendment. Any further discussion on the recommendations or the motion as amended? There being none. Just a minute. Councillor Bezanz. Sorry.
Thank you. Sorry, but I guess I'm fine with the motion, provided that this still enables us to consider this in light of whatever other discussion we're going to have around the budget. You know, I know that there's a whole shopping list of items that are being proposed in the 2016 budget that we haven't even looked at or discussed as yet. And to deal with this one, as, you know, as tempting as it might be, in isolation of that, just makes me a little bit uncomfortable. So if I'm supporting this as, let's, you know, give staff leave to take it back and then come back with a report to us that we could consider in light of all that we're going to be considering, I'm okay. If not, then I won't support this motion.
Okay. Thank you. I'll have the commissioner first, and then Councillor Hamperton.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify, and I could certainly understand, you know, why it would appear that it's a budget request for '16, given the timing of us coming back today and the fact we are talking budget. But in actual fact, for this one, we went through the 2015 capital budget process for this one. So the council has approved the D.C. investment and the $100,000 investment from the municipality. It's all was subject to coming up with an agreement, which has been in the process of being negotiated. So we're checking back in today, and now we'll check back in again. But technically speaking, these funds were approved in the 2015 budget process.
Thank you. Councillor Hamperton?
No, that's okay. I just, yeah, I appreciate the comment about the DCs and, you know, where that funding is coming from. It's something that staff has been looking at in the past. Thank you.
Okay. All right. All those in favor? Opposed? Item number 12. Item number 12 is a petition that's been received. The recommendations that have been received are referred to staff. Could I have a motion with respect to the recommendations? Councillor Twitty? Is there a secondor? Councillor Brumplumley? Speaking to the motion? Councillor Twitty?
I'm happy to have this documentation as the recommendations state to move to the public consultation process that's related to the arena.
Councillor Brumplumley is the secondor.
I'm also fine with moving to public consultation, but I would like to maybe discuss some of the things in the petition itself, just regarding clarification on the question itself. I'm not sure that I'm clear that the question was correctly presented.
Thank you. Regional councillor.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's considered friendly or not, but I guess the way I would suggest to deal with it is that there's the preamble to the petition appears to, from my information, have some potential misstatements. And I'm wondering if we couldn't ask staff to bring back a report on this prior to bringing it or in conjunction with bringing it forward to the meeting so that they can just look into it. I mean, we can have a conversation now, but I'm not sure everybody has every piece of data at their fingertips. And I think it's worth having it in writing as well, not just verbally, as this is in writing. So I'd just like to see staff report back on this.
I think that's a good idea as well, because there are some very, very significant misstatements in my view. And if staff's going to provide us with a report to correct that misinformation, then I would also ask that some consideration be given as to how we get the message back to those people who have signed the petition. And I don't know as to whether or not, I know that the addresses are redacted, but I think there should be some very specific communications back to the people who have signed the petition and have done so with misinformation. So I'd be happy with that as a direction to staff. And are you seeing this as a friendly amendment?
Yeah, so basically, I think, yeah, I mean, that's fine that we have a report that comes in conjunction with this that comes to the public consultation process. So basically, we'll have that information that clarifies perhaps some of the information on here alongside of...
Alongside the petition itself?
Yep, that's fine.
Do you see that as friendly?
Sorry, just to, you know, just to follow up. We get petitions all the time on things, right? And we're not, we're not in control of, say, a preamble to a petition always. So I think, you know, having a report come back with some information in conjunction with this is fine. And, I mean, that's, it's part of democracy that residents are allowed to go out there and have petitions signed, I guess. But definitely, I think we should have something, a preamble, something that goes along with this petition when we have the public consultation process from staff.
Okay. Thank you. So you see that request for a report to clarify that is friendly?
Yep.
Councillor Brumplumley, do you see that as friendly?
I do. And I agree. I'm just questioning that I want to make sure that the residents have all the information, and going to public session would certainly enable that and clarification on more than just what's here. Maybe there's more that could have been presented to residents, and I'd like to see that happen as soon as possible.
Thank you. And I would be happy with just a direction to staff to outline how we might inform the people that have signed the petition as to what the accurate information is. So I'll leave it at that. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Let's go to item number 19, because following that, we have the PowerPoint presentation in the closed session. So item number 19 is the lobbyist registry or lobby, I guess, is it a registry or some framework that we're talking about? We have the report before us. Does anybody wish to make a motion with respect to the recommendations? Councillor Bezanz?
Yeah, I'll make a motion just to get it out there, but I have some questions.
Okay. Is there a secondor? Regional councillor. Okay. Thank you. Councillor Bezanz is the mover.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate, given, you know, the discussion we had earlier and, you know, the comments about the fact that garbage and recycling is one of the biggest services that we provide to residents in this town. And through our engagement with the N6, we've been able to achieve some cost savings and efficiencies by going together through the contracting process. So I recognize that this represents a lot of...
So, I recognize that, that this represents a lot of, uh, money to, to us, but also to the, to the contractor, whoever would be successful in, in winning this contract. I also appreciate that, um, the details of the bidding process establish a blackout period, which would be very specific to, um, prohibiting anybody interested in bidding on this contract or, um, involved or engaged with somebody who might be interested from having any contact outside of the person designated for the bidding process. And for that reason, it, um, it seems that there's, there's been a recommendation from staff that we embellish that blackout with a lobbyist registry framework. My question with respect to that, given, given that the framework really doesn't have an ability to investigate, recommend, or impose penalties for noncompliance, so it's really just, I guess, um, a process by which, by which anybody approached by somebody would have to record that, uh, discussion or that interaction. So, it's, it's transparent, it's, it's visible, it's on file, and that's fine. But I just would like some clarification then around the ti- expected timeframe, like, would this start right now? So, you know, if I walked out this, the, the door here, and somebody tapped me on the shoulder and said, "Hey, let me talk to you about garbage," then I would have to, to sign the form, or how that would work? So, my first question is, what's the timeframe around the lobbyist registration framework? And, um, secondly, my, my question is, um, I think if we have a framework like this, as important as it might be for, for us here in Newmarket to feel that we've been, you know, doing due diligence and, and keeping away from any undue influence, there are another five partners in this process. So, what would compel, uh, the other five partners to also implement a similar, um, registration framework apart from, from the blackout period? Is it just yet again something that we're going to recommend to the others that they do? Or can we put a stronger recommendation on that?
Okay, two questions there, I think number one, effective date, Mr. Brower.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the intent of the lobbying registry is to come into effect prior to the issuance of the RFP. So, the RFP speaks to a blackout period which specifically restricts counselors from their interactions with the proponents that are bidding. This is intended as a, as a, um, practice prior to the issuance, so prior to spring. I think that's when the, um, RFP will go out. And it would be effective, uh, following council approval. For example, if this moves forward to council on, um, November 16th. We are, we would be developing the forms and the process referenced in the, in the body of the report, in the interim, and have that available then, and then we would start the posting, the public posting of the registry itself on November 23rd. With regard to the other partners, the, we can't compel another municipality to, um, uh, participate or do something similar in process, but we can recommend that, and that was the intent with the, um, the third recommendation of sharing counsel's direction on this. And I know our CAO has been, um, sharing, uh, you know, in, in, even in a draft form. So, the other counselors, I believe, are, are likely to be aware of this, or at least the staff. But we can't compel them from, um, doing the same, just because each counsel can make a decision on their own.
Mr. Shelton, did you want to add to that?
I think, Mr. Mayor, the only thing that I could add to that is that this is a case where, um, uh, Newmarket, what we're proposing here is that Newmarket would lead on this, uh, set the example, with the hope that that would be, um, right across the N6. With the previous contract, we did have a, um, a registry during the tendering period. And we, that was controlled at, at the clerk's office, just to make sure that, uh, if anyone was approached, they made note of it. This is maybe a step up, uh, from that. The, um, previous total contract value is in the $60 million range. So, this will be in excess of that, uh, just given the growth over the last 10 years. So, it's a very significant contract, and, um, uh, this is, um, a recommendation from, uh, from Newmarket. And Newmarket, in this case, is leading the preparation of the RFP, leading the process. So, this is really, uh, taking a lead role.
Thank you, Regional Counselor.
Thanks, uh, this is, uh, an interesting report and, uh, thought-provoking. I guess my, I have a few questions. What, first of all, I guess I just ask, it says staff members, but it's yet to be decided which staff members. I guess the, the way this is being set up, and the way I read it, is that people would submit every two weeks, whether they had a meeting or not. So, for the next year, I would submit a form every two weeks, even if I had no meetings in that entire year.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, um, I think the intent of the two weeks was just that the information would be gathered and updated. If there was nothing to report on, then, then there would be no need to disclose that. But we could, um, you know, finalize the precise, uh, I guess the concept is, on a routine basis, the information would be collected and disclosed.
Okay, I misunderstood that. So, that, that does sound a little less, uh, you know, procedural, and, and you're, you're, so you're reporting, if you have any meeting, you're, it's incumbent upon you to report it. So, then I guess if that's the case, then I'd, I'd ask why we wouldn't just include all staff? Why would we include six or eight, or 10 staff? I mean, if, if you only have to report, if you've had a meeting, then hopefully, if you're not one of the key people, you're not having those meetings, and if you are, well, why wouldn't we want to know about that as well?
Yes, actually, Mr., through, Mr. Mayor, the intent is all staff.
Okay.
Um, I, I think it was just the way the wording was, the way it was phrased.
Okay, so, super. The next question I have is, first of all, is it, is it, or have you seen it done elsewhere? That, I guess, this part about not allowing a public deputation to counsel. It's an interesting one, I mean, I, I get why you wouldn't want that in some ways, but another part of it is, I mean, the public's entitled to deputations, they're entitled to that access to counsel. It's in public, it's recorded, it's, it's, in fact, it's the best way to have communications. It's in public, it's transparent, and we're all present. What's the thought behind that? And, and I'll add one last hook to it. Why would we, in particular, prohibit a public deputation prior to the blackout period, but allow one-on-one meetings as long as they're registered? So, I can have a one-on-one meeting and just say I had the meeting prior to the blackout, but you can't have a deputation to counsel, which is public-streamed or recorded and with all of us collectively? That seems a little odd.
Um, with respect to the, um, uh, the, um, deputation piece, I know in the previous round, that was one exception, and it was specifically referenced during the blackout period. I think this was just to extend that, um, framework, I guess, of, of limiting lobbying. You're, you're right, that, that, you know, presenting to council is really no different than presenting individually. So, council could, could consider, um, amending that piece. But it, but I believe that the restriction, what staff's intent here is to restrict the deputy, making deputations during the blackout period specifically, where in the past that was allowed. And, um, so, in order to, you know, apply that principle of truly having a blackout period, it would, it would be restricting the interactions with individual counselors and to counsel through a deputation.
Okay. Um, I guess my final comment would be that I understand why staff would meet, need to meet with, uh, potential bidders, right? That, I mean, there's some members that have to, that's their job. I mean, they've got to provide information, they've got to talk about the terms, et cetera, et cetera. Um, if, if we're worried about, you know, council interaction, and there's been attempts in the past, no question about it, for firms to contact elected officials, uh, you know, maybe, I, I guess, my question is, did, did we go as far as thinking about just having counsel voluntarily say, "We, we won't meet at all"? Like, I mean, why not just say, I mean, whether it's during a blackout or prior to one, if somebody's sitting down with me one-on-one, it's a large firm, bidding on a $60 million contract, I mean, I'd rather have them come and sit in front of us all, and, and, you know, have it streamed and transparent. So, I mean, I guess I'm wondering, did staff consider recommending, or should we consider? I'm, I think I'm comfortable to say, you know, starting next week, we won't meet with anyone.
That certainly is, is possible. I, I suspect, uh, some of this has to do with the scan that we took on, on other, uh, experiences and practices. And, uh, you know, on one hand, I think it's just, um, uh, try, I guess it's trying to balance the individual role, or, or role as an individual member of council, trying to learn and gather information versus, uh, respecting the, the blackout period and, and allowing the procurement process to proceed. So, it's trying to find that balance in there, and I think this is, um, the feedback we need to make, to make sure that the process is the way it's, um, appropriate for Newmarket.
Mm-hmm, so I'm thinking as through as I go, unfortunately, and it's probably not the best way to do it. But I, I'm wondering, what about, I mean, deputations to counsel, we could just have every proponent coming in. Single, individual, private meetings where you just say, "I had a meeting," doesn't seem very ideal. I, I lean away from doing that at all. What about allowing the proponents the right to submit through staff written documentation, but it must go to all of council?
And all of the N6?
So, no individual or all of the N6. But I, I mean, if, if they want to impart information, I guess that could be fair. I, I'm not sure how it would affect us, we're, you know, but, um, but otherwise, I, I guess, the long and short is, I'd say, either, either allow deputations prior to the blackout, where it's here, it's transparent, it's in front of everybody, it's streamed, or not at all, and allow maybe written submissions to all of council through staff. But I would actually say, as far as one-on-one meetings, I'd like to propose we, we just make an amendment saying that, that, uh, the council, uh, council agrees to, uh, to have no individual meetings with, uh, with any potential, uh, bidders on a go-forward basis.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the, I'm deferring to the Director of Legislative Services, because both, uh, the Director of Legislative Services and Legal Services took this on, but, um, in fairness, it's fairly new. We could take your feedback and bring this back to the next meeting, if you'd like to do that, taking a look at the deputation component. And if there are any other comments that council members have, um, there's an intent to this, and as long as the intent is, uh, is being satisfied, I think we'd be fine with that. Anita, did you, uh, have some?
Mr. Moore.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to add to what the CAO has said, it would, it, if we slowed it down a bit, it might give us an opportunity to come back. When, uh, the regional counselor mentioned about, um, not meeting with, uh, with any proponents, does that mean a phone call, or, you know, a passing in the, in the hallway and a comment? So, we really need to define it, so, uh, not only to protect the process, but also members of council.
Yeah, if I, if I could, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, I, I, I think it's a great idea to take another couple of weeks and just think it through, and, and look at some of these options around, uh, what we've discussed, because, uh, I mean, if we're going to do it, let's do it right, and, and don't get me wrong, I think these are great, great suggestions. And, but, um, to your point, Commissioner, I mean, thinking about those types of things. But I, my feedback would be, it's all of the above. I mean, if you're, if you see somebody in the hallway and it's to say, "Hey, how are you?", that's fine. But we all know the difference, and, and it's all, it's, it's on trust anyway. So, we know the difference between "how are you?" and "hey, can I talk to you about the contract for a minute?", it's pretty clear. So, uh, I would like to think it's everything, phone calls, meetings, conversations in the hallways. I mean, it's, it's a prohibition on discussing the contract. And you know what? It's, it's, it makes for a very easy, short conversation, if somebody calls. We, you know, we've got our set of rules, and, you know, so, uh, yeah, anyway, yeah, I think...
Be a deferral motion or refer back?
Yeah.
Or back to staff for further consideration? Okay. Is that, uh...
I think that would replace the...
Recommendations?
Yeah, that supersedes.
So, yeah, I'd make a motion that we, uh, refer it back to staff to be brought back, uh, I mean, the sooner the better, but I don't want to put it, I don't know your workload, but it is to be brought back for, uh, with further information around options.
And, and the, the one consideration I would ask staff to put some thought to, and that is, by, if we want to consider having or permitting deputations, would that interfere with the balance and the equity of the, the RFP process, right? So, how does that, how does that affect the RFP process if one person gets, chooses to get in front of council and another cannot? So, how do we have equity across that whole negotiation? So, that would be a consideration as well, so...
Yeah, I, I agree completely, if I can last, but I think we have to give consideration to the other side of the coin, which is, uh, what, what rights do we have to restrict, uh, a proponent who's got, uh, a package of information, a letter from their lawyer, and saying, "We want this sent to council"? Can we say, "No, you can't send it"? I, I mean, I, you know, so I think we have to think that through, too. But maybe that's one way to handle it, is just, you know, written only. That way, you know, you, you read the facts, and staff can even provide commentary on that, because it would come through them. But there's no one face-to-face where, you know, the, yeah, so, anyway.
Okay, lots of good considerations, so we have a second for that referral? We need a second for the referral? Councilor Hamp, any further discussion? All those in favor? Madam Carrie, thank you. Well, now for the reason we're all here today. Item number 15. Where's Mr. Mays and his presentation? Want to take a short break? It is 4:42, all right? A 10-minute break? Because we know this is not going to be brief. Okay, let's do five then. So, we back about, uh, I have 4:42. Let's say 4:50? Take a break, 4:50, recess.
So, if you, you restrict, right? And you don't have, and you just have restrictions?
Okay.
Flavor, right?
All right, if members of council would take your chairs. A call on Mr. Mays to put forward the presentation. And what we'll do is we'll save our questions until after the presentation because answers may be later on in the presentation. So, Mr. Mays, if you'd like to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council.
Members of the public, staff.
I'm going to present to you the draft 2016 preliminary budget. This is the budgets for tax support operating, utility, and capital. So I'm going to just reinforce what the information we've received so far, being the council direction, some of the challenges we've had in the budget this year, which explain why we're at, where we're at, the response that staff is proposing at this time, going to some of the details on the budgets, what we have so far on public engagement, and next steps. I just wanted to emphasize one thing here, as it is getting late in the day, and we do have a special committee, the whole budget meeting, next week, is that it's our intention to, at this point, present the information, show where we stand on the budgets, and go into a more robust discussion next week. So the basis for any budget decisions, any decisions we make at all, is the council priority. So we just reinforce that here as this is a presentation, though later we'll be going on our website. Direction we've received from council to date has been on the increase, which is two and a half, up to two and a half percent, not to exceed two and a half percent. For the town portion, no consideration at this time, no direction given on a infrastructure levy increase for the asset replacement fund. The starting point for the 2016 budget, as you see, we have significant challenges. Start off with, we had the annualization of the 2015 enhancements. As you may, I'll show more details on that. So that is one driver we had to deal with. We had the opening budgets submitted for the town, which is equivalent to 1.92% tax increase. This is before any provisions for growth items or enhancements. Fire and library as well. We have a new item here called optimizing revenues to reflect achievable targets. That is a mouthful. I will give you some more information on that. But as you can see, this is a significant and new driver we've had for 2016. The challenge we have is we have a target at two and a half percent, and we're at 5.37 just at the beginning of the process. The things, though, we set the targets for the 2016 budget was to make sure that we complete it with realistic revenue numbers, that we focus on sustainability, limiting the carryovers. We don't want to just push expenses into previous years, so just limiting the carryovers, those that were approved in the 2015 process, and to maintain service levels. I mentioned the enhancements that were inferred, that were adopted in 2015 and have to be annualized in future years. So we have $173,000, that's the second column there for 2016, that's being carried over. The annualization of sidewalk snow clearing, the first phase, which started in 2015. The annualization of the hiring of administrator, manager of transportation, and other monies that were set aside for transportation initiatives. As I mentioned, the numbers presented to this point, the 5.37% tax increase do not include growth enhancement items. We had a number of requests, as we do in any year, and we pared them down. We tried to keep the growth requests within the funding envelope for growth, and I'll provide some more information on that. And at this point, we're recommending that there be no enhancements brought forward that have any tax impact. There are two enhancements that we are recommending for inclusion in the budget, which, one is funded from the asset replacement fund, and the other is from utility rates. So I want to talk a bit about the optimization of revenues. This shows the historic trend we've had on our non-tax, tax-supported revenues. Let me just go through that a little slower. So on the operating side, as you know, we have the tax-supported budget, and we have the rate support, which is water and wastewater budgets. If we look at the revenues excluding property taxes, this shows what the trend has been over the last five years, going from 2010 to 2014. And what you'll note is that revenues from 2010 to 2013, the actual revenues have been exceeding budget, but in 2014, we saw a swing. This is the issue that we're dealing with now. What has happened is the core revenues, the core revenues being user fees, investments, permits, things like that, that the town establishes, we found that over the five years have not been hitting their budget targets. Though they're increasing on an annual basis, they have been underperforming according to their budgets. What has happened is other extraordinary revenue items, which are more volatile and less predictable, have been making up the difference. So for instance, in 2010, where the surplus on revenues was two, over $2 million above budget, $1 million of that was from supplementary property taxes, and $770,000 was from the sale of assets. So in fact, the core revenues only exceeded the budget by $500,000. In 2013, we were $900,000 better on our revenues than budget, but $830,000 of that came from supplementary property taxes, and $500,000 came from an additional hydro dividend. If it weren't for those supplementary and additional revenues, we in fact would have had a deficit on revenues of $430,000. In 2014, the deficit was $900,000. This was even including the fact that we had $360,000 in additional revenues from supplementary property taxes. So as you can see, what has happened is we're not hitting their budget targets on the core revenues, and in the years, we don't have extraordinary items to offset those, either on revenues or expenses. We're at danger of being in a deficit. So the key message is here is revenues are growing on an annual basis, but what happens is the core revenues I referred to are not hitting their budgetary targets. This happened in 2014, where we didn't have any offsetting extraordinary revenues, and we're projecting this will happen in 2015 as well. This was referred to in the second quarter report for our operating results, and there'll be more details in our third quarter result. So in 2016, we need to address this. We have to have realistic and achievable targets, and we went through a very similar type of examination of our historical expenditure patterns. And this is the next slide I have here, which is expenditure patterns. What you'll see here, that generally speaking, to do 2010 to 2013, our expenditures come under budget. Again, this is the tax-supported expenditures, and in both these slides, I should emphasize, this is excluding any transfers to or from reserves. In 2012, we in fact were $1.4 million under budget on our expenditures. And this is due to a number of factors that we keep our budgets in check, but also one of the things is, it's deliberate, deliberate policy, deliberate process on management's side to ensure that we're offsetting any revenue shortfalls. Unfortunately, in 2014, we, our expenses exceeded, as we had $1.9 million, sorry, we had $2 million in exceptional items that I referred to on the bottom of the page there. We had reassessments of our insurance, our workers' comp, and we had five, over half a million dollars spent on an O and B hearing. Those things, though they were offset by reserves, they were not contemplated in the budget process, and we ended up having expenditures that exceeded budget. So the takeaway on this, in general, expenditures come in under budget. We manage our expenditures. In 2014, we had too many extraordinary items hitting out at one time to be able to offset that. This also made it difficult for us to offset the deficit in revenues. So to recap, we're looking at the starting point on the budget of 5.37% tax increase. We have a target of two. We need to find 2.87% tax reduction in refinements, so just over $1.5 million. So we're proposing the following reductions and refinements. The overall goals, though, again, going back to the, I spoke originally, we want to maintain service levels. We don't want to see softening in service levels. So we tried to look at places where we could reduce and refine the budget without affecting service levels. We also wanted to focus on sustainability. We wanted to limit the carryovers that we brought forward into future years, just to address what was brought forward from 2015. We also want to make sure on a go-forward basis, we have realistic revenue targets, we have budgets that could be achieved, and that we're not going to be hit with a shortfall. So a list of some of the things we've come up with is, first of all, the cap, the capital financing in the operating budgets at $500,000. It's currently $722,000, so a reduction of $222,000. This is going the other way, but when we looked at the amount of expenditures, and I'll give the details on that, for the growth items, that actually sees the growth funding by $90,000. This actually is a switch from what we've done in previous years, where it tends to be, we use some of the growth revenues to fund the base. We're looking to increase the provision for hiring gaps to $400,000, which is an increase of $269,000. Traditionally, we've seen the gap anywhere in the half a million to $1 million range. So this is achievable if we make a deliberate concerted effort to do so. To reduce, reduce the insurance transfer to reserves by $100,000, an adjustment on streetlight maintenance for $50,000. I'm just going to drop to the second line from the bottom there. And other budget reductions. Now, you see, that's a very large number, 843,000. Staff, O L T, S L T, did a very diligent review of all the budgets based upon historic trends, what expenses are being used and not used, to look at right sizing some of the expenses in light of some of the revenue changes. And these are all items that are under $50,000. They're minor in this sort of magnitude. We will provide some total information on this at the next meeting, but I just wanted to show you that there was not one significant item. There was a lot of work put into this, and this is what we came up with. However, even with all these reductions, we still fell $130,000 short of hitting the target in reductions. So that further cuts are still necessary. So you step back for a minute and looked at the situation. In a better situation, if we got hit with an unusual adjustment, as we are getting hit with the revenues in 2016, normally would, one would phase that in over a couple of years. We're taking the majority of the hit, actually 87% of that hit in 2016. This was an incentive to find many, many budget reductions, but we don't believe that there is any significant reductions beyond what we found at this point. So we're still $130,000 short, which represents about 13% of the revenue adjustment. But that be deferred to 2017. For 2016, there's a number of different strategies we can employ to cover the $130,000. The simplest one would be to pay for it out of reserves. We're suggesting at this point to not do that, but leave that as, in a sense, a stretched target for the, for staff, to find either, to incentivize them to find either additional revenues or additional cost savings. If at the end of the year, we're not able to If at the end of the year, we're not able to, to fulfill, to, to actually come up with those additional savings or revenues, then we perhaps will have to fall back on the revenues. But we, again, we'll go more into, on the sixteenth, the next meeting, we'll go into the actual risks and strategies, but at this point, we're suggesting those are, there are some options of how we can fund that hundred and thirty thousand dollars. This is what the budget would look like at a two-and-a-half percent increase, when we break it down to the steps. Two-point-one-seven percent being the base, point-one-six percent being the mandatory. Now, what you will notice, though, we are, we are projecting assessment growth with one percent for two thousand and sixteen. That actually is not as great as the growth items, which is one-point-one-seven percent. So, we're not bringing in sufficient assessment growth to fund all the growth items. However, we feel this is still a prudent way to go, because within the budget itself, we have supplementary taxes, and this does not exceed the full amount of what we have in for supplementary taxes. At this point, we have not included anything for the asset replacement fund, nor are we suggesting any tax increase for enhancements. When we look at it on an all-in basis, information we currently have from the region on their outlook for two thousand and sixteen is a two-point-eight-five percent increase. We're not anticipating any increase from the school boards. So, the consolidated tax increase for the average resident would be a two-point-one-five percent tax increase, ninety-six dollars, of which forty-four dollars and five cents would be to the town. Again, this does not account for any infrastructure levy at this time, nor does it account for the possibility of any tax shifting. We've just taken the numbers as we anticipate from the other boards' budgets. Just to provide you some information on what's happened in the past on the tax levy, you can see what we've done in two thousand and thirteen and fourteen and fifteen, that, these were increases based upon the information we received on the capital financing sustainability strategy, as reported by Hempson Consulting, which recommended an increase, an annual increase of one percent. Staff is also suggesting that that be the increase for two thousand and sixteen as well, and that would represent another five hundred and thirty thousand dollars for asset replacement. If that was the case, the tax increase target would increase from two-and-a-half to three-and-a-half percent. I've just provided the information on what that would mean to the average taxpayer. So, the asset replacement, the infrastructure levy would be seventeen dollars and sixty-three cents, or a total of sixty-one sixty-eight. Moving on to the utility budgets, we have various cost drivers. We have nine percent increases from the region for water and wastewater treatment. We have, again, the, the challenge of maintaining infrastructure. We're suggesting an increase in the asset replacement contributions within the water and wastewater, which would, for the construction price index, which would be about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and additional funds for maintenance and condition assessments, which would be approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There's also some capital requirements within the capital budget, which amount to three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. And as always, in water and wastewater, we make sure that we continue to meet health and regulatory requirements. So, the resulting water rate, on the variable rate, the volumetric rate, what you pay per cubic meter of water would be nine percent, which actually is the same as the increase, the charge we're getting from the region. We're suggesting also that there be no change in the monthly fee. We're going through a review of that, and for July first, we're targeting a phasing of increases for non-residential monthly charges. This would represent to the average tax, to the average resident, an increase of six-and-a-half to seven-and-a-half percent, which compares to the seven-and-a-half percent we, we projected in the six-year water and wastewater plan. I believe it'll come in under six-and-a-half, closer to, under seven-and-a-half, closer to six-and-a-half. We still have some further analysis to do. This would represent an increase of, on a monthly basis, of four dollars and forty cents to six dollars and four cents to the average resident. It's also my belief that these rates, this rate increase that we're projecting, will be lower than what we anticipate seeing for our neighbors. And just to speak, just briefly, about the phasing of increases to non-residential on the monthly charges, what we've seen from the comparators, when we do things like the BMA study, is that our residential, residential rates tend to be higher than average, but our non-residential rates tend to be lower than average. So, we're going to use the monthly charge as a mechanism for shifting the burden on our water rates. The two thousand and sixteen capital budget is, before you're there, this is all a summary of all the new purchases by the different spending. Everything is within the funding envelope. Just to give some information, on the other funding, under growth, that would be Aurora's share of the new fire station and the, the land for the fire station, and under replacement, that would be the gas tax for the roads program. And under other, the other funding, most of that would be grants. This is analysis prepared, just to show you how we are staying within our funding envelopes for the asset replacement fund and for general reserves. As we suggested, one of the cost reductions was to cap the contributions to the capital fund from our operating budget of five hundred thousand. We've also reduced the capital budget requirements to five hundred thousand to match that. On the public engagement communication, I have some notes here. We've been running the budget tool, and to date, we've had a hundred and twenty-seven residents participate in it and using it. We've been using a variety of communications to direct people to participate in it. We have had a booth at the farmer's market, we've done print and radio advertisement, we view social media, we distribute toolkits to counselors, and we have advertisement on the town website. Based upon the hundred and twenty-seven responses we've had so far, the majority of respondents still seem to be indicating that they would like to maintain level of service. This is consistent with the results we've had in previous years. To encourage people to participate in the program, we also have a, we will be having a draw, a two-hundred-dollar incentive for people, and they can use this to apply against their taxes, their water bill, or any town-funded activities. The budget tool will be open until November thirtieth, and next week, we'll be bringing forward every information report with details on what's happened so far. Just want to speak to you briefly on the budget schedule. Original budget schedule, the presentation of the draft budget was going to be October twentieth, and we're here at now November ninth. When we presented the original schedule, we spoke to having a committee whole meeting for the draft budget on December seventh, with council approval on December fourteenth. That was then moved up to the twenty-third and the thirtieth. I'm asking for council direction, committee direction, if they still want to stick to the twenty-third and thirtieth, or they would like to move it to the seventh and the fourteenth. We're going to be having a meeting next week on the sixteenth, special committee of the whole meeting. We'll have information posted on the website by then, or sooner, as it becomes available. We, we will need a decision on, as I said, on the November twenty-third, as to whether we're going to use that meeting or not, regardless of whether to go for approval on the fourteenth or thirtieth. Next steps is things we're going to cover off on the November sixteenth meeting. We're going to provide more details. We'll give you the breakdown on all the items that we've given for the budget reductions and refinements, and with them, an assessment of the risk, what mitigation measures are in place to reduce the risk, and what, if any, service level impacts there will be. Talk about how we built sustainability into the measure, measures into the budget, provides more information on the infrastructure levy and options, as you said, a report on community engagement, and an outlook of what we believe that the drivers for future years will be on the taxes. And that is it.
Any questions? Counselor Twinni and Counselor Kerwin.
That's a lot of information. Could we get maybe for next week, or before, like before next week, you put out a lot of numbers, like on, on slides eight and nine, and maybe some more detailed information on, on the, the budget versus the actuals, on revenues and, and expenditures on those two slides? Because I, I was finding it hard to follow everything on those.
Through you, Ms. Mayor. Yes, of course. We'll have more details on that.
And I know you did mention that we're going to get a, like, next week, we'll have a breakdown more on the, the, I guess, the other budget reduction items, the eight hundred and forty-three. We'll get a better breakdown on all of that information as well, right?
Yes.
You did mention that, so, okay.
Again, through you, Ms. Mayor, we, we have all the details on that. It's, it's a lot of little items that would have filled up a presentation again.
Yeah. No, but it's just, for next week, we'll have that information, right? So that we, we know where it's all coming from, and, okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kerwin.
Just a question to you, Mr. Mayor, to our Director of Finance. Mike, when you talk about core revenue, okay, would you interpret that for me? To me, core revenue, to me, would be property tax, in whether it's commercial, residential, industrial, but it seems not to you. What is core revenue?
Mr. Mays. Through you, Ms. Mayor, well, to be honest with you, that's an expression I just made up this morning.
We know how fresh the presentation is.
Yes, yes, that's it. That's why I'm asking, Michael.
Okay. The definition of core revenue, you're absolutely correct. In, in most situations, you would consider your tax revenues to be part of your core revenue as well. So, I was trying to distinguish on that, because if you think about, basically, in our budget, we have our revenues, we have our expenses.
Yes.
And the thing that makes it all balance is taxes.
Yes.
So, I'm just, I was just focusing on the revenues excluding the taxes. So, we take what's in that, what are the things we can count on, we can fairly, we should be able to predict, they have some reasonable sustainability to them, they have predictability, we can count on them. Those, I'm saying, are the core revenues. So, this would be things like our recreation fees, our licensing fees, our investments. Those are things we can count on, we're going to get every year, we can sort of predict what they're going to be. This is to distinguish from the ones that are not core revenues, such as where we get additional money on selling assets. That's not something we plan on every day. We've got an additional hydro dividend, where our supplementary taxes, and I, I'll show you graphs showing the volatility in those, that these are things we can't necessarily count on or predict in any specific year. So, I, I was trying to make the distinction between those two things, so.
In, in some, property tax is a core revenue. It's part of the core revenue.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, but not for the definition I was using for this example.
Not the definition we were using here today, okay?
If I might be able to help, I think what we're trying to define is that the property tax is, is really what covers the gap between the sustained revenues from other sources. Is that, is that what you're trying to define, Mike?
I, I couldn't have said it better myself.
Because we'll always have to raise property taxes to, to, to cover the difference between our sustained revenues and what our, what our expenditures will be. So, so that's revenues before we rely on property taxes and extraordinary items. Does that help, Dave?
No, it doesn't.
Okay. Mike, then you try.
It doesn't, Mike.
Okay.
It, it doesn't. To me, it's very confusing, because there are more properties being built within New Market, and sometimes they come in on, on, on the supplement, okay? They come in afterwards, after, as you've seen when you presented, how they sometimes close the gap. To me, to me, core revenue, to pay for what we use to offset the expenditures, core revenue to me is a property tax. Which makes up about, I think, almost fifty percent or more of what we spend.
Perhaps we'll say core non-tax revenues.
Okay, core non-tax revenue. The key is to distinguish that from the. Yeah, okay, great. Now you've done it. Okay, good. I see that.
To distinguish that from the non-core revenues.
Yep. Okay, Mike, no problem. I, I grasp that.
Thank you. Appreciate the explanation, Mike.
Yep.
Counselor Hampin.
Mike, slide number eleven, the capital, cap the capital financing at five hundred thousand dollars, and savings are a proposed number of two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Can you just give me a little, a little bit of an explanation on that one?
Yes. If we go to, I'm just going to, just go back to the slide on the capital funding. So, the capital program is funded through a variety of sources. The one we're, we're most familiar with is the asset replacement fund. So, if we look at, I think I got the right slide there. So, if we look at replacement capital, so we have three types of things we buy capital for. To replace what we already have, because the population is growing, we need to buy it new stuff for maintaining the same service level, and then just all that other stuff that we buy, which could be to enhance service levels, health and safety, whatever. So, when we look under the replacement, you see the main funding from that is the asset replacement fund. If you look under growth, you'll see the main item for that is development charges. Under the other, there is some cases where some asset replacement fund money is available. We could have some dedicated reserve funds, we may have some other funding, like grants and that. Whatever's left over, we have to find other sources. That's either going to come directly from the operating budgets, or that's been accumulated in our general capital reserves. That's the five hundred thousand I'm referring to, if you see that line there, comes to five hundred thousand. So, at the beginning of two thousand and sixteen, I'm projecting we'll have about two-point-two and a half million dollars worth of general reserves. We're going to spend five hundred thousand on the capital budget. We have five hundred thousand in contributions. We end up in the same place as before. So, these are, the general, the general funding is for things that aren't covered by anything else. Prior to two thousand and sixteen, so in two thousand and fifteen, we put seven hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in for funding of those kind of assets. What we're proposing for two thousand and sixteen is reduce that to cap it at five hundred thousand. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Counselor Bazant.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and through you, to the Director, perhaps not directly to you, but since we did have a change in terms of the timing of presentations and everything, I think there was a little bit of disconnect on the website with respect to what would be presented today. So, I think it was still based on the, the previous assumption that, that a more complete budget package would be presented here for public discussion. So, I think if we're going to move the dates, then we need to make sure that the, the website reflects that, so if people are looking to participate, they have that opportunity to do so. So, just a, a comment. The other, the other question is with respect to, similar to what Counselor Twinni was asking for, will we sort of be able to have more detail that provides us with, you know, what the two thousand and fifteen budget was, what the actuals were, what the two thousand and sixteen budget is proposed to be, and, and the variance and description of what are some of the, the drivers in those variances?
We'll be able to give you that, through you, Ms. Mayor, we'll be able to give you that money, sorry, that information to a limited degree. Obviously, we, for two thousand and fifteen, we're going to give projections of where we expect two thousand and fifteen will end up. We are working currently on the third quarter report for two thousand and fifteen, which will have projections, so we can use that as a starting point in, in the third quarter report, as what we see the, the major variances and how those drivers are factored into the two thousand and sixteen budget.
So, you'll be able to provide budget versus forecast versus what we're, we're planning in the budget in sixteen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Clarify, that's for the November sixteenth budget stuff meeting, is that correct, Mr. Mays? Will it be available that soon?
I'm not sure we'll have that offered the sixteenth. I, I believe the third quarter report is scheduled for the end of the month.
So, that might not be available even then at the earliest.
We could, we could discuss with, perhaps it's possible we get that out earlier, but I, I don't think we'd have all those details for the projections for next week.
So, I'm sensing here that this is a good indicator in terms of when we're looking at what we're forecasting for the next term, and that would be a helpful indicator. Thank you. Counselor Brumplam.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Echoing Counselor Twinni, Counselor Bazant, so I'd like to make sure that we do have before the sixteenth, a little bit more information with regards to page eleven. It's a lot of information here, and a lot of money being discussed, and not a lot of explanation as to what the other line items would be. I'd like to make sure that we have that before the sixteenth, as opposed to on the sixteenth. Is that possible? Is that possible?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we'll endeavor to have as much information as we can prior to the sixteenth. I just want to reinforce that attached to the report, you will find a list of all the capital items included in the capital budget. As well, you have a list of all the growth enhancement items that have been included within the budget and those that have been deferred, that are not included in the budget. The details will include the various items on the capital reductions and refinements and some general discussion on if there's any risk involved in them and how that's been mitigated and what sustainability measures we have. The, the two, the projections, I, I don't believe we could have them in time for the sixteenth. I'm not sure, are there other details you're looking for as well?
Regarding page eighteen, I believe you mentioned that the new fire hall, is there more information on that that could be available or maybe you've given it to me and I've missed it?
The, the capital budget? The capital budget is attached to the report that was with the genet, and that would list off the, the funding for the fire station.
And finally, just with regards to the public meeting, it's a week from now, so are we going to have enough information and time to have the information and time to inform the public of the meeting?
Mr. Mays? So will we have enough information for the November sixteenth meeting?
And time to inform the public, it's a week from now.
We've already set the date of the sixteenth as a meeting. There will be substantial amount of information and details available for the sixteenth. As to whether that is sufficient, I think that would have to, that stands to be seen or not.
I guess that begs the question, should we maybe not go forward with the November sixteenth and defer that next meeting to November twenty-third if the information is considered to be...
That would be, that could be council's decision. I believe, though, we've provided a lot of information on the capital budget, for instance, which this discussion could begin on. You know, we've outlined the plans for the utility budget. We've made recommendations on the growth enhancement items. We still have to fall on, the council has to make decisions on the asset replacement fund contribution, if there will be one, or what the amount will be for two thousand and sixteen. It's my belief that there is enough to discuss at the sixteenth, whether we have all the information or not.
And as to whether or not we'll come to some final conclusions. Mr. Sheldon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just going to say, I think the Director is also saying that attached to the report itself, there's a significant amount of information on capital and on items that have been deferred. And we have, I think in the report, indicated that this year, we've tried to follow a different process to a degree, and that is to involve our operational leadership team more so in the process. So we have had all of the Directors at the table sharing in the solutions, and it's gone very, very well. But this is the election year where there's two budgets in one year. So we have indicated that, you know, that is a, it adds a little bit more time to the process. SLT has then jumped in to come up with the final method of hitting the target. So if on Monday, you find that there's more information required or more time required, it can certainly be added. But I would still suggest you go forward with that meeting. Got a lot of information out there. There will be more coming on Thursday before the, before Monday that sets out more information. And it's more on the details of, of the reductions in the operating and how we have achieved the target. And then I think very important is the risk analysis so that you see how, on the one hand, we've taken a risk here and we've tried to mitigate it in another area, and how it balances and how we are trying to move really more to a budget that is sustainable in terms of revenue. And that's the point that Mike was trying to get across there, that we're starting to see that gap. So we need to set realistic revenues. If they exceed, if we exceed those revenues, that's great. But in the years where we're not seeing the revenue flow and we're hit with extraordinary issues, that's where we're having a challenge, and you can only rely upon your reserves for, for so much. So you'll see that risk analysis on, as part of the package going out on Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. Regional Counselor?
Thanks very much. Yeah, I'd, I'm hopeful that, and glad to hear that we'll probably be moving forward next week because I do have a number of questions about the report that's attached, and I'm assuming we're going to get more into detail there, and I'll save it till then. Although, before that meeting, I do plan to spend some quality one-on-one time with you, Mike, and go through some of those so I can have some of them, hopefully some of them out of the way so I don't have to go on and on in the meeting. But three, three things if I can just before the meeting to help me understand it. One is on slide eleven, people are referring to slide eleven, the other budget reduction, eight forty-three. Is that captured in the deferred list or is that other items?
The eight hundred, that is not in the deferred list. The deferred list is growth enhancement requests that we're not bringing forward in two thousand and sixteen, so they're deferred for consideration of future years.
Okay.
The eight hundred and forty-three thousand, those items of forty thousand dollars or less, there's obviously a number of them, that were brought forward by OLT, by SLT, by staff in general. Some of them are reductions, some of the refinements, and some of our minor adjustments to revenues to be able to offset the optimizing of the revenue issue we have.
Okay. Can we also, would it be possible, at the region, when there's new, each year with the, any new recommended hires, there's usually a bit of a, nothing too over the top, but there's a bit of a, an explanation and a case made for each position. We've got a number of positions here, and, I mean, we can sit in a meeting and ask ten questions about each one, but it might be more fruitful to get just a bit of a half-page around each one in advance. I forget what it's called, but there's a form at the region that you probably have it anyway, so.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, what we have is, we call them the decision packages. So every, a new growth or enhancement item, and that would be the only way that staff would be added, is through that mechanism, would have a one-page document giving the details on it. But what we can do to, to supplement that is provide also a list of all the positions and index them to those decision packages as well.
So we could get that maybe in advance? That's easy to pull together?
Yes.
The decision packages? Great. That would be helpful so then we, when we talk about those, the new hires. The last two questions I have are, the first one is on the capital list. I'm wondering about this idea about, you know, we're seeing in this one slide, you know, the ARF number's down a little bit this year, but I'm well aware that it depends when projects are being executed, and that can be not necessarily apples to apples when you compare ARF balances at one year to the next. But having said that, when we raise, you know, the rate, let's say, point eight or one percent asset replacement to try to go towards this, that's one way of addressing the issue. The other way is, I guess I'd be interested in, if there's a process or a way we could look at staff looking at the capital budget requested lists. And, you know, I guess one of my concerns has always been is that we, we seem to largely treat our, our as a flow-through. And how are we ever going to build a balance for those future years where we know that some of the spikes occur because it's always flowing through? Would there be a possibility of going through some sort of process this budget where staff looked at a number of items in this list and, for lack of a better way of putting it, you know, gave us a glimpse into perhaps the ten least prioritized? Or is there a process we go through to look at, trying to find in this list, and I'm seeing some things I have questions about, but I'll ask them, but that are not absolutely crucial and that could total, you know, up to, together up to a million dollars or something, and we could start to build an ARF balance by just, you know, not quite doing as much each year as opposed to the other side of the coin, which is raising more? I think Bob was there.
Mr. Sheldon?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, let me partly answer your question is that in the capital program, you'll see there is a, there is a priority given to each of the projects in one, two, or three. So in the attached to the report is a list of all the capital projects, and they're broken into the three categories of growth, replacement, and other. And in each one, they are given a priority. So that may not totally address what you're, you're asking about, but I think that would start to, you know, give a bit of an answer to that. Now, also, I should add that in two thousand and sixteen, for the two thousand and sixteen budget, for the first time, we're starting to try to do multi-year projections on the capital as well. So we've, based upon the information submitted, we've forecasted out for up to ten years of what the requirements are. We'll be on things like asset replacement fund.
Okay. Could you, I suspect it's probably relatively easy to do, could you resend the capital budget request list but resort it according to ranking, so the ones, twos, threes?
Sure.
Thanks. And then maybe we can have a conversation about that. The last question I have, Mike, and just in advance of a fuller conversation on this in subsequent meetings, is could you maybe do a little more? It was very helpful to get the list that you sent out today with the, with our assessment growth rates. And there's no question, contrary to perception sometimes in the public, that New Market's growing rapidly, you know, with what we're projecting here, a one percent assessment or between one and two for the last number of years, that makes us probably the slowest growing municipality in York Region. And with that comes some revenue challenges. So I'm wondering if, but what I'm really wanting to do is look at for the process in the next coming month or two, is what degree of risk there would be in applying, let's say, a one point two-five to growth revenue as opposed to the one percent that you've, or assessment growth as opposed to one percent you currently have? And could you help us a little bit more with try to understand where two fifteen is looking or what basis we might analyze two fifteen, two sixteen on? Is it, is there, you know, things in the pipeline? Is there some data you can bring to help us get a bit of a better picture of that and what risk level there is if need be or if desired to consider adjusting that number slightly? And obviously, there's risk, there's some risk, but try to, try to get a better handle on the depth of that risk in doing so.
Just like projects under construction and things like that that would be coming on stream as far as assessment goes, those kind of things?
Well, projects, yeah, yeah, some of that, the kind of data on house, you know, completions or starts or what we, what's in the pipeline and whatever we can do to try to get a best picture. My guess is one is a conservative number. It's, if you look at the historical data, it certainly looks like a, now, but maybe it's also heavily supported by data and now it's just the simple fact it's going to be one. But whatever it is, if anything you can do to help us get a better, better read on that assessment projection for this year and next year and, and what level of risk there would be in adjusting that number. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Vay.
Thank, thank you very much. Regional Counselor John Taylor made one point that I wanted to make too because I'd, I'd noticed that when, if you're looking at a municipality, and if it's a municipality, quite frankly, if you're not growing, you're going to be putting more of your tax burden on your existing, in the existing tax base. So, so growth is very important for any municipality, it's not just New Market, but for any municipality. And also, I will be setting up some time to meet with you to talk about the number of items that we have here and the more detailed information that we had received and talk about those, perhaps a couple of things that might, might be missing, et cetera, and also a few questions on the priority ranking for that. The real question is whose priorities? Like where, you know, how was that determined? Was it with, with staff? Was it with the communities? I don't believe we were given a form to complete on priority rankings, so I'm very interested in how you came to that, but we'll speak about that a little bit further in probably other, other council meetings, too. For now, though, I do have a question, just on clarification, and I know this was a fairly high-level presentation you made. On page six, you speak about the challenges involved in the annualization of the two thousand and fifteen enhancements and the enhancements going forward, but then when I jump to page twelve, and that's our operating budget, it has enhancements all at zero. So I'm just not making the connection between these two pages.
Okay. Before, to that, I just wanted to talk to the capital priorities. You made a good point. The, the capital priorities, we've said, is not, we've judged the quality of one project versus another and established priorities based upon that. That obviously is council's prerogative. We've established them based upon whether it's a health and safety issue or it's already a contractual agreement, in which case it's a number one. If it's a replacement item, number two, otherwise this is number three. So it's a very, very simplistic priority rating based upon what kind of expenditure it is. It's not anything to do with the quality of the project.
If I can just make a point to that, looking, looking through, through here, I've noticed a few items that, for example, got priority three, but they were part of, parts of developments that the developer had already paid the town for, and they never happened. Usually recreational amenities in communities and in parks. So it's not a replacement. Certainly wouldn't consider it something new because the residents already paid for it, but it gets ranked as a three. So we'll, we'll have a further discussion on that. So I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying not all of these fit into those three needs categories. But, but back to my enhancement question.
Yeah, on the enhancement question, so in two thousand and fifteen, so in two thousand and fifteen, we had enhancements. Actually, there was another twenty-five thousand in enhancements. Those were enhancements, those were things that added into the budget. And you're right, in that year, we identified them as enhancements. Thereafter, they're considered now part of the base budget. So the annualization of those items in two thousand and sixteen, that is now included in the base budget. So that's why they weren't identified as separate enhancements.
Okay, thank you. That makes it clear.
Good. So I just wanted to build on the suggestion the Regional Council had in terms of resorting by priorities, but I, but I think to Counselor Vay's point, it would be good for us to have the criteria, the rating criteria that's been attached. So, so if you're going to distribute that, I think it would be great to have the, the factors that are considered when we're going through that, that process. So that, I think that would be helpful. Mr. Sheldon?
Good. I was going to say, Mr. Mayor, that priority ranking system was approved by council some time ago. We've been using it for a number of years, so we'll send it out to you so you see why they fit into that category. And I would think that it's based on that health and safety, committed contract, and so on. But we'll get that out to all members of council.
And if we want to revisit that policy, then that, that council can take a look at that, just so, just so we be consistent as, as we go forward. Counselor Kerwin.
Just a question, Mike. I know we're coming to the end of two thousand and fifteen, but has the CPI been established for two thousand and sixteen? Or what, what CPI you're going to use to carry over to two thousand and sixteen?
Okay, through you, Mr. Mayor, at this point, for the last two months, the Toronto CPI has been running at one point four percent. However, the only context that the CPI is actually used in is for establishing the, what the economic increase will be for staff, and that's established based upon the October CPI, which will not be available till at least the third week in November. There are no...
Okay, so we're coming close to getting that figure.
Yeah.
End of November, we'll know it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mike. That's all I need.
There's another factor that the region takes into consideration, given that their expenditures are a lot different than the general grocery basket, and I think they refer to that as the municipal CPI. And I think it also allows for the construction CPI, because sometimes the construction industry, their costs are substantially different than what we would see in the general CPI. So those are other factors that we should give some degree of consideration to as well. But that's a good point. Thank you. Any further questions with respect to the presentation? I'll receive that and bring the report forward. Motion to receive the presentation, Counselor Kerwin, Counselor Vay. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried then. Thank you. Next item is item number sixteen, which is the, the report on the draft budget. Could I have motions with respect to that? If there's any discussion? Regional Counselor seconded by? I need a second here. Counselor Bazant. Regional Counselor, you want to speak to the recommendations as the mover?
Just very briefly to say that I think it, it works as the framework to go to the public with, and that allows us to have a dialogue with the public, but to continue our own discussions around this table and, and one-on-one with staff around both capital and operating. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Bazant.
I concur with that and, and just again, reiterate the importance of being very clear in our communications with the public that, that this is available and when there's an opportunity for them to come and participate in the, in the discussions.
Great. Thank you. And I would encourage everyone to find some time to meet with Mr. Mays if there's any areas of clarification that, that we can help develop a better understanding for prior to getting into the next group of meetings, because I'm sure that there still are a lot of questions, and I'd encourage you to have that discussion either with Mr. Mays or with our CIO or anybody else that's appropriate within the senior staff. All right, I'll call the question then. All those in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. Thank you. The only remaining item I see then is item number fourteen, which is a closed session request. We do have item number four still outstanding, but again, I've asked that we defer item number four, and I'll request a motion to go into a closed session.
Okay.
And, and that is... And that is for, I'm just make sure the record is accurate, that is with respect to item number 2015-9, which is potential acquisition of land. And this, the discussion now, one is the, is the one that's contained in 2015-9, but I also want to be clear that the discussion that we are going to have as well also relates to item number four and the potential acquisition of item number four, that's discussed in item number four, as to the extent of negotiations. Okay? So could I have a motion to that effect?
Still moved.
Okay. Councillor Hampton, councillor Curran, all those in favor? That is carried. We had a two-thirds majority. If you could let us know when we're ready? Are we good? Okay. So the only item remaining on the agenda, then, is item number four. Item number four is relative to the recreation playbook recommendations. We do have a report before us with recommendations. Could I have a motion with respect to the recommendations? Regional councillor?
I'll make a motion that staff be directed to continue discussions so that taking out delegated authority to negotiate a purchase, that staff be directed to continue discussions related to school, to the York Catholic District School Board lands on their side of Woodspring Avenue, Northwest Quadrant, per Section 209 of Municipal Act. And number two, and that staff report back unless told otherwise within 60 days with detailed capital costs, operating expenses of the three options outlined in this report for consideration. You've got first quarter of next year, I assume you want to move quicker than that, no? Because it's...
I guess, I guess the question would be is do we need to move quicker than that? And what's the urgency or the timelines with that? So I'd much rather have a fulsome proposal.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Within 60 days? Sorry, yep. Okay, go ahead, Mr. McDougall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, we would certainly endeavor to do it as quickly as possible, but I mean, 90 might be a better window. Given what Mr. Sheldon said earlier, I think it would really benefit this process to actually make sure that, we may need to engage some outside expertise to help with it, but we need to plot any recreation facilities on the site, look at the topography of the site, and potentially look at the extent of the site that's necessary for recreation amenities versus potential other uses. So we need to, need to look at all of, all of the site in more detail, so I would suggest 90 days.
90 days. And again, is there pressure for us to go forward on this or?
Probably.
And that's going to be adequate, 90 days for you to do that? Okay, okay, all right. So that's moved and seconded, and 90 days is a friendly amendment? Yep, okay, good.
Give him the Christmas holidays.
Will that take us right into the middle? I'll call the question, then. All those in favor? There's none opposed, and that is carried. A motion to... Oh, wait a minute, before we do, could I remind members of council to complete the survey with respect to the code of conduct? I think we'd like to have that by the 11th of November. So there has been, now, is that Survey Monkey or is that hard copy? Either way? Okay, all right. We'll get you a hard copy as well, but if we could by the 11th, so in the next couple of days?
I have to think about it.
All right. Any, I guess we should finish the agenda off. I know we're eager to do that. No public hearings? Anything under new business?
No.
Okay. Oh, sorry. One quick item?
My question is with respect to the community ice rinks. Last year, we had, council had approved three, I think, for the pilot with an indication that after the pilot, we'd consider additional ones for this year. And given that, that winter is right around the corner, it would be helpful to know whether we have the go-ahead to start planning that in some other communities, and if so, what's the process for approval if necessary?
Mr. Service?
The, certainly, we're happy to have discussions about how we can facilitate additional rinks. The challenge will be funding and whether or not there's water sources available already. To add a water source is around a $5,000 price point, and the previous two that were approved that didn't have water sources were able to secure funding from the community. So, so we don't actually have a funding source to add additional rinks at this point in time, but we could look into that.
Mr. Sheldon?
I believe, my memory serves me right, the last report on this talked about the monitoring period. It still is in place, and I thought that any new outdoor facilities would not kick in until the winter of 2016, 2017. Is that not the case by the last report? And that could be circulated to members of council if I am correct on that.
Mr. Noam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My recollection is similar to the CAOs that we were going to undertake a bit of an assessment as to the success of the pilot projects. Now, having said that, an information report has just recently been provided regarding the three that were undertaken last winter and the cost associated with them. And by and large, they have been successful to date, there has been good use. So, you know, I guess it would be at your direction as to whether or not we want to expand the existing pilot beyond the three that we currently have now or continue the monitoring. So I think we're in your hands, really.
Do we not just get that report to clarify before council and then look at it then? Because if it says that, it's a...
Well, I recall the report talking about the costs and so forth, but not specifically addressing when the next tranche of community rinks, if there is interest in doing that, would, would be enabled. Because my recollection from the discussion we had about this time last year is that we would allow three, see how that goes, and then for, for this, starting this winter, if there were other communities that were interested, to go ahead with that. So I just appreciate clarification.
What we can do is circulate that original report that set those parameters out, and if there's any variation to that, or if there's a request from the community group, that might be something would come forward for council's consideration. Would that be good? Everybody's okay with that? Okay, good. Reports from, any other new business? Reports from regional? Okay. Any notices of motion? Any means we'll tie you up? None? All right. I think that covers the entire agenda. Motion to adjourn. Regional councillor, councillor Bazanz, all those in favor? None opposed, and that is carried. Thank you. Wow, we got through a very long day. I think with these reading glasses, Andrew...